On Sunday, April the 19th, at Sacred Heart Catholic School, the walk commences at 9:00 AM in the morning and registration begins at 7:30 AM. Pre-registration is at the school on Saturday, the 18th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Pamphlets are available throughout the city, or people can register online at the msociety.ca. It's easy, it's healthy, it's earth-friendly, and it's a great way to help people less fortunate in a world that's too rapidly becoming selfish instead of selfless. So, thank you very much for your time and hope to see you on walk day.
Thank you very much. Were there any questions of Mr. Benzel? We'll thank you again, we'll look forward to hopefully participating once again this year, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Move on to the next item on the agenda, members of council. We have a presentation from Valerie Williams, who's a volunteer at the Fire Hall Theatre, who will provide council with an update on their production called Autumn Leaves at the Niagara Falls Music Theatre Society. Welcome Valerie.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the president of the Fire Hall Theatre. I'm here to introduce Val, and really what I'm here for is to thank the city of Niagara Falls, who are our landlord, for being such a terrific landlord and doing all the things they have done for the fire hall. I've lived in apartments for the last 10 years and I've never come across such a good landlord. I was going to make a list of all the things that you've done for us, but I thought that some of the other groups behind me might get jealous, so let me just say thank you very much for everything and let's continue to be, to work in conjunction together for the city of Niagara Falls. Thank you. I'm going to introduce now Ms. Valerie Williams.
I'm an old lady, I'm a missus. Married fifty-five years, but my husband died last year. Anyhow, this is the second time I've been and had the honour of addressing your honour, ex-honour, Wayne, remember me? And the rest of you gentlemen. I come from a line of actresses, so shut me out if I talk too long. The history of the Fire Hall Theatre is quite fascinating, and I'm sure you're all aware it was a fire hall, built in 1917, and 50 years later it became a theatre. It started off, the Niagara Falls Music Theatre Society was a professional group initially, and Kate Reed and William Hutt were down here performing. That was way back in 1961, before all of your people's time. Anyhow, the fire hall became available in 68, and it is now filled with a volunteer amateur group. We're all volunteers, we all work for love, not money. We put on about four plays a year, using mostly Canadian playwrights. In the summer, we do a fundraiser for the Child Development Centre, Shakespeare in the Vineyard at Pilateeris, yeah, I think it's Pilateeris. So you can sit and drink wine and get drunk and go to sleep, you don't have to bother with watching the Shakespeare, which is a bit heavy at times. Anyhow, the green room, which as you all know is at the back of the stage, was the original horse trough. The horses were stabled there, and there's a trough for pee, we don't let the staff use that. I must add thanks to you and Ted for putting me out, I can be very difficult at times. I usually do just the wardrobe, I'm obsessive compulsive and I like things too tiny, and they volunteered me to be, no, they proposed me to have a volunteer award, and this is what you gave me, Mayor Southall, this is a show and tell, and thank you so much for that. And in 2003, I was here when Wayne Thompson was the mayor, and he came to my door and offered me congratulations and one of these nice certificates for being married for 50 years. So now I've got more because I'm 80 now, and I got this really nice one from the House of Commons from Kim Crater, but the best ones from the month. It really is beautiful. Isn't that lovely? So I'm going to conclude by saying that if you want to... Oh, I meant to hand this around, but I've forgotten it, for show and tell. Would you like to see it? That's what the fire hall, that isn't our fire hall, it's the one that was on Main Street, and that's the horses. Oh, don't be mean, I may have been in there, but not Wayne. Anyhow, I've got all this pile of certificates and what have you, and it goes to prove that volunteering is good for your health, if you can keep healthy, and it leads to the good life and lots of awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Valerie, appreciate that. Perhaps we should mention, the production is being held on February 20th, 21st, 27th, 28th, March 6th and 7th at 8:00 PM. There's a matinee as well on March 1st at 2:00 PM.
Thank you for helping me with my...
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for your production again this year. Members of council, move on to the next item on the agenda, we're having a chance to present some heritage, municipal heritage awards, and I'm going to ask councillor Janice Wing to take the podium as well. She will present the heritage awards to the number of recipients, and I'll have a chance to join her at the front of the podium. Thank you.
I'm going to read from here, it'll be a lot easier since I have a sheet of papers. If we could call them up, in the cultural heritage category, Dawn E., Mr. Chipewa. The natural history category, Frank For, of Park in the City. Lifetime Achievement Award, John Dupien. And, last but certainly not least, John Harkness, who recently received the Lieutenant Governor's Ontario Heritage Award up at Queen's Park. I'll read a quick biography, Dawn, Dawn E. Dawn has made outstanding contributions toward preserving the cultural heritage of the former village of Chipewa and township of Willoughby, both of which ceased to be official entities when they were absorbed into an expanded city of Niagara Falls during the formation of the region in 1970. It is due to efforts of people like Dawn that a proud sense of place has been carried on, and awareness of the heritage of the former village and township, fresh and strong. Dawn's contributions have been with a volunteer, as a volunteer with the local historical museum, historical society and sites, as a local history researcher and writer, as a voluntary teacher of local history and traditions, and through his ongoing willingness to share his personal collections of local artefacts, heritage photographs, and memorabilia with the Chipewa and Willoughby communities and the larger community as well. Thank you Dawn, and congratulations.
Thank you.
A retired teacher, Frank For has shared his passion for the preservation of the natural history of our community with both his students and the larger community. Frank has especially committed to the preservation of trees and woodlots. He strongly advocates for the planting and preserving of native species. Frank has been involved in organizations too numerous to list, but which include the Niagara Falls Nature Club, Project Share Community Garden, and Niagara Falls Horticultural Society. Frank chaired the Park in the City's former urban forestry subcommittee. One of the subcommittee's initiatives under his leadership was conducting an inventory of boulevard trees to aid the city in preserving its stock of trees and replacing missing ones. Frank continues to serve as a highly valued member of the Park in the City Committee. Through his recommendation, the Park in the City Committee purchased 100 sugar maple trees and sold them at the local farmers' market, where Frank volunteered his time and expertise educating residents about the importance of trees and creating healthy and vibrant communities. Thank you Frank, congratulations. John Dupien is receiving the lifetime achievement award. Although John's work in heritage is how he earns his living, what he has given of his time, knowledge, energies, and efforts has extended far beyond the work he has been paid to perform. An archaeologist, certified appraiser, and heritage resource consultant, he has become a walking encyclopedia, constantly available to and called upon by the news media, heritage organizations, and individual citizens alike. Over the past few decades, John has lent his voice to numerous heritage causes, joined grassroots conservation efforts, provided endless streams of pro bono advice, donated amounts from his own resources to preserving important artefacts, including buildings. He is a priceless resource to the Niagara community and beyond, and is respected as a leader of tremendous stature. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
And finally, John Harkness. Few can match the degree to which John has immersed himself in the fabric of the local heritage community. He is a fixture at local heritage events of all kinds, and has carved out a special berth as a local heritage ambassador. He is both an avid supporter and tireless promoter of such events, attempting to stir broader community interest as well. His dedication involves willingness to help whenever and however he can, doing everything from selling raffle tickets and garnering donations, to organizing for many years the annual adopter road cleanups along the public roadway where the Battle of Lundys Lane was fought. John's involvement in preserving our local heritage dates to 1956, when he and others formed the Lundys Lane Museum Society. He helped plan, establish, and operate the Lundys Lane Museum, which opened in 1961. Following its 1971 reorganization, he served on the museum advisory committee and later the Board of Museums. He has been a Lundys Lane Historical Director for the past 13 years. As a member of many years previously, he assisted with publishing books and with marketing. He joined the Friends of the Lundys Lane Battlefield upon its 1995 founding, and has been a director since 1999. He assisted with fundraising to restore the Battleground Hotel and the Archaeological Dig to recover artefacts. He's a guide for Doors Open and other events. A lifetime member of the Willoughby Historical Society, he helps there too with fundraising and promotion. He secures Friends of Stanford Village speakers. He helped organize the Fenwick Susquehannet Centennial, and as a director of the Royal Canadian Air Force Association, he also assists with their annual three-day vintage aircraft show. And that is just what John does on the heritage front, we're not even listing what else he does in the community. Well done, congratulations.
Thank you very much councillor Wing, we appreciate the activity that the municipal heritage committee performs, and certainly the value that they have contributed to the quality of life here in Niagara Falls is certainly to be noted as well. So thank you very much for your involvement as our council representative on that committee. As well, I'd like to call on the next deputation, it's the Niagara Falls Sports Foundation. We have with us Mr. Dragon Matovic, who is the director with the Niagara Falls Sports Foundation, who'd like to inform us with regard to the activities of the foundation. I'm going to ask, if I could, Mr. Matovic to come forward please, thank you.
Good evening. I apologize, I don't have a formal presentation for the council this evening. I was here primarily to address any questions from the council regarding correspondence we sent in about a month ago regarding the city's proposed assistance with the foundation.
Great. Are there any questions of council, from council, of Mr. Matovic? Yes, councillor Thompson?
Maybe Dragon, if you could just give a brief summary of what the group is all about. I think the community would like to know, and I think some of the people in the audience would appreciate that.
Sure. The Niagara Falls Sports Foundation is a new organization designed to acknowledge the athletic achievements of our youth here in the city, and to also acknowledge some of the coaches, volunteers, and other supporters of the local sports community. And we will be working with the Niagara Falls Review to give out scholarships to deserving athletes and some of those volunteered and coaches. And we would simply like the city's assistance on some of the clerical and administrative aspects of the foundation.
Yes, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I have moved a motion that we work with the foundation to make it all come together and work.
Yes, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Members of council, you'll have with you in your packages a request that council pass a bylaw to establish a reserve fund for the Niagara Falls Sports Foundation, which will be an unincorporated organization. On an ongoing basis, the actual dollars for the fund would be sourced through the fundraising efforts of the Sports Foundation, and again, through their efforts as well, and no city funds would be required, qualify that. As well, they're asking that the council appoint a representative to sit on the board of directors. This individual can be either a member of city council, a member of the city administration, or some other individual that the council deemed appropriate. Well, actually, we can ask staff to come back with some recommendations there to us as well. And it is the intention of Niagara Falls Sports Foundation to disperse most of the funds collected each year for its various scholarship awards, and there will likely be a smaller percentage of the funds that will accumulate to form an endowment as well. And that council permit the finance department or other city administrative staff to work with the Niagara Falls Sports Foundation executive members to resolve various logistical matters, such as bank accounts, receipting of donation funds, requisitioning and payment of expenses, and the annual financial reporting. Is that correct, Mr. Matovic? That's great. So that's the, attend to the motion, I believe, and if there's any questions from council, are there any further questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All of the favor? Motion's carried, you may leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matovic, appreciate that. We have as well the next report from Park in the City Committee. Mr. Frank For, who's a member of the Park in the City Committee, will update the council on the use of plastic water bottles. As well, we have a number of other deputations that have been made this evening. I understand that the mayor's youth advisory committee is here, we have two representatives, Mr. Christopher Colinari and Mr. Harish Agarwal. And also, we have a request to speak from Mr. John Chaloner, who is the public affairs director for the Nestle Corporation. So, yes, councillor Wing?
I realize this isn't a public meeting, but normally in a public meeting, anybody in opposition speaks first, followed by the proponents, so I'd ask that Mr. Chaloner speak first, please.
Okay, making that a motion?
Yes.
Seconded by councillor Peter Angelo, I should say. Any discussion on that motion? Having seen none, all of the favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Chaloner, would you like to come forward, please? Welcome.
Welcome. Evening Mayor, members of council and staff. On behalf of Nestle Waters Canada, thank you for the opportunity to appear tonight to discuss the staff report regarding the continued use of bottled water at your facilities. First and foremost, we are here on a point of principle. We don't sell our products in vending machines, we sell our products through grocers and convenience stores. But our view of this matter is no different than that expressed by our industry partners who do sell their products in vending machines. We are firmly opposed to the banning of the sale of bottled water in any municipal facility where there is regular public access. We also believe that disallowing the use of bottled water by police, fire, and ambulance personnel is a significant health and safety issue because of the emergency conditions they often find themselves in. Access to a public drinking fountain or use of a refillable bottle isn't practical or sanitary. We are not opposed to members of council, committee members, or staff replacing bottled water with pitchers of tap or bulk-delivered water at committee and council meetings or internal staff meetings. In our view, that's just common sense, and something that should be managed administratively, not politically. However, in our view, banning bottled water in your facilities will have the effect of trading public health and a reduction in plastic beverage containers headed to landfill for what is nothing more than political greenwashing, environmental symbolism, and bad public policy. Such a decision will not reduce the amount of plastic beverage bottle litter in those facilities where it is being enacted. Simply taking bottled water out of a vending machine will not change human behaviour when it comes to drinking tap water instead of bottled water. According to a recent survey of 2,260 Canadians by Probe Research, more than 70% of Canadians don't view bottled water as competing with tap water. They drink both. They drink tap water at home, and they drink bottled water out of home to support their busy, on-the-go lifestyles. That same survey indicated that 60% of Canadians drink bottled water every day, and 75% of them consume it because it is a portable, accessible, and healthy choice. Survey respondents also said they are not choosing bottled water over municipal tap water, they are choosing bottled water over other bottled beverages for calories. What should be of particular concern to all of us is that the study and other studies have also indicated that about 60% of bottled water drinkers said they will revert to less healthy beverages found in plastic beverage containers if bottled water isn't available. The fact of the matter is that bottled water is proven to be particularly helpful at a time when the incidence of obesity and diabetes are on a significant increase amongst all Canadians, and particularly those born after the year 2000. Almost 30% of them are overweight or obese, are susceptible to diabetes, and may be the first generation of Canadians who don't outlive their parents. There isn't another portable beverage that provides the health and wellness benefits to Canadians that bottled water does, and they need encouragement from governments like the city of Niagara Falls, industry players like ourselves, and the media if we hope to blunt the advance of obesity and diabetes in this country. Last year, both Health Canada and the Ontario Ministry of Health identified obesity as the most critical emerging health issue facing Ontarians and all Canadians. We at Nestle Waters Canada strongly encourage all Canadians to drink more water, whether it's tap water or bottled water. We also encourage local governments like the city of Niagara Falls to work with our industry to find ways to increase the current 60% recycling rate for plastic beverage containers. For example, we and our industry partners recently entered into a $7.2 million, three-year agreement with the government of Quebec and municipalities across that province to collect and recycle plastic containers and other recyclable materials in public spaces. The pilot program that triggered this agreement resulted in, on average, an 85% recovery rate. Nestle Waters Canada and its industry partners are rolling out Ontario's first public spaces recycling program in the city of Sarnia this May. By the way, Sarnia Mayor Mike Bradley called the banning of bottled water by municipalities and school boards a distraction. And following the recent defeat of a proposed bill to ban bottled water in Ontario, Education Minister Kathleen Wynne said she voted against the bill because a number of Ontario schools rely on bottled water due to serious lead contamination issues. She added that bottled water gives children something to drink that fits with the ministry's nutritional guidelines. Kingston Medical Officer of Health Ian Gemmell recently wrote that a prohibition of the availability of bottled water in a municipality is a step backwards from a health point of view when high-caloric beverages are the only option. The majority of Canadians agree with Mayor Bradley, Minister Wynne, and Mr. Gemmell. A Legere poll conducted this past fall found that the majority of Canadians with families, the core demographic for bottled water, oppose bottle bans in their communities. In this current economic climate, with unemployment currently at 8% and trending higher, there is no doubt that most Canadians take a dim view of government policies that will impact our industry's 11,000 Ontario employees for no good reason. At the appropriate time, we would appreciate council giving consideration to a motion we have circulated to you in your packages. In closing, Canadians have been drinking bottled water for almost 125 years. They should feel confident that they are doing the right thing from a health and wellness perspective, as well as from an environmental standpoint, because they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaloner. Are there maybe questions for members of council? I have councillor Einoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to congratulate our committees for trying to find a greener option, and I really do, but I'm going to play devil's advocate here, because I have a child who plays hockey, we're in the arenas, we're in the parks, we're in all of them, and if I don't buy bottled water there, I bring bottled water with me. By the simple fact is, I'm not letting him go drink out of a fountain. The kid rotates more germs than you can ever imagine, and he's just not doing it. I sit in a hockey arena every weekend where when the kids don't have their own bottle of water, we send the mothers to the concession stand where we buy them big bottles of Gatorade that are in the same plastic as the bottled water. So I don't mind us going down a greener path, but the note I made myself is then are we going to eliminate pop, juice, and Gatorade too? Because they're all made from the same plastic bottle. And I can give you my word, the mothers are going to buy cases of water at No Frills or whatever store's having them for $1.99, and we're going to bring them with us because you cannot hand a kid a cup of water in the middle of a hockey game.
Councillor, do you have a question for Mr. Chaloner?
No, I have a question for our staff. If we go down this road to get greener, are we going to then take the next step and ban Gatorades, which are in the same bottles? Pops in the vending machines, which are in the same bottles? And juices that are in the same bottles? And in the same note, we had Hart Niagara here not very long ago talking to us about the increase of obesity in kids, and I'd just as soon give my child a bottle of water than a can of Coke or Diet Coke. So I'm just curious as to where, when we eliminate that, where else are we going to eliminate? Because if the committees wanted to be consistent, we're going to eliminate the Gatorade and the juice too to get rid of those plastics. So could staff tell us, when we open this door, does it then open the door for us to eliminate all the other alternatives?
That may be a council decision, but we'll ask if there's any input from staff. Ms. Morrissey, would you wish to address that question?
Certainly, through the chair. The original design was, and I think when the Park in the City Committee speaks next, and your mayor's youth advisory, they can certainly address that as well. But yes, I mean, the source of garbage is one of the things that we're trying to mitigate, and as councillor Einoni said, that people still need it, and the report will speak to the fact that in some instances bottled water will be nothing but the absolute option because we don't have anything. But we believe, and the reports will speak to that, as will your committee representatives, that there will be alternatives in order to provide water in our facilities and our parks that's more potable, including using a stainless steel mug. Certainly appreciate that behaviours need to change in order to facilitate that, but that's part of the education campaign, and will other drinks potentially change their packaging in the future? Maybe. But we believe that because tap water is so prevalent, and because tap water is provided by this municipality, and you have the statements from the Ontario Municipal Water Association that are encouraging that, we have letters from the regional health department that support the use of fountains in our facilities as a soul and option for the inclusion of water. That while we can mitigate the other ones going forward, certainly there are options, and yes, our goal is to reduce it, but this is a first step, and because water's available through the tap, and we already do it in the community centre, our new arena's got fountains everywhere, we believe that will make some significant changes in the way that municipal tap water is made available in the city of Niagara Falls. So that's the background.
Thank you. Councillor Einoni?
Thank you. Then are we going to take the further step if we're talking about reduce and eliminate allowing people to bring the bottled water into our city facilities?
Hi.
Because if the mothers are bringing it in, you're still going to have the same garbage. Because behaviour, it's easy to put something on paper, but it's a lot harder to change an ingrained pattern.
Thank you. Ms. Morrissey?
Through the chair. Our goal is not to prohibit people's right to bring it in, we're not saying that. Our goal at this point, through the committee, who have championed it, and primarily the mayor's youth advisory and our Park in the City, is that it's the direct sale. And in the alternative direct sale, we do have a source of municipal tap water in our buildings. So, for example, if a family chooses to bring in bottled water, that's their prerogative, they can certainly consume that in our facility. Our goal is to change behaviour, and I think you're seeing it with the plastic bags right now. For example, in Toronto, law laws eliminated the use without a surcharge. So we believe that through education in our community and through our practices as leaders, you're going to see an educational change in behaviour, and councillor Einoni, that may actually facilitate the reduction. By the person who will choose not to bring in bottled water of their own accord, they will use their mug, they will use other potable sources to help protect the environment and reduce the amount of waste that's currently going to landfill or is being recycled, and as our committee will speak to, it's exceptionally expensive to recycle plastics when market has diminished in terms of the recycled product to repurchase that. But the region can probably speak to that better than I can at a later date.
Thank you. Other questions for members of council? Thank you, please. Councillor Wing?
Just a few quick questions, Mr. Chaloner. Does Nestle have a contract with the city?
No, as I indicated at the outset, councillor, we're here on a point of principle. You will not find our products in vending machines anywhere in Canada, we sell through grocers and convenience stores.
Okay, do you have any facilities in the city of Niagara Falls?
We have people who work here, and we deal exclusively with the retail environment, so we have clients here.
Okay, do you have any facilities, physical facilities, in the city of Niagara Falls?
No, we don't.
Are there any Nestle shareholders who live in the city of Niagara Falls?
Very likely, yes.
Any idea how many?
Honestly, I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
I'd be willing to bet there aren't any, or very few if there are. I'm just trying to get a handle on who exactly you're representing from our community.
I'm representing the retail segment of Niagara Falls, people who sell our product and earn an income from the sale of our product.
And if there is no Nestle contract with the city, and Nestle facilities, Nestle products aren't sold in city facilities, and what exactly is it that Nestle stands to lose here?
We have about a 35% share of the market in Niagara Falls in terms of the sale of bottled water, and we also very likely sell cases of water to your departments as opposed to vending machines, and so there certainly could be an impact in that regard. It all depends what you decide to do with your emergency services. But our concern is, we don't agree with the proposed staff report. It doesn't permit choice, and people should be allowed to make a choice, particularly if the vendor like ourselves is being responsible. Today, as you're aware, we fund 50% of your curbside recycling programs in Niagara Falls, we and our industry, and we work with the province in a number of promotional areas to encourage Ontarians to recycle. And we're proposing to... And we're proposing to expand that program in the province of Ontario through public spaces recycling. We currently have a program in Quebec. We're piling the program in Sarnia, and we hope to work with the Ministry of the Environment to bring that program throughout the province of Ontario. And we believe that at the end of the day, it will result in a recycling level that could approach north of 70%, perhaps as high as 80%. The program in Quebec by itself today has an 85% recovery rate.
I'm afraid I still don't understand how possibly supporting Nestle Corporation in its bid to keep its profits up is going to help the citizens of Niagara Falls keep their property taxes down. You say 50%. The actual figure I understand is lower. Even if it's only 50%, the burden of landfilling and recycling falls on the Niagara Falls taxpayers. And this is one of those areas, as I referred to downstairs, where concerns with sustainability and keeping property taxes down coincide. There is absolutely no financial benefit to the people of Niagara Falls to do what Nestle wants. There is, though, a benefit in starting the banning or discontinuing of the use of bottled water in our facilities where the alternative of clean drinking water from fountains is available.
Your worship, if I might... Excuse me, please. Can I ask you to refrain from clapping, please, if you wouldn't mind, just to let the speakers make their presentation? Mr. Shaloner, yes, this isn't a debate, but certainly you can respond to the question.
And, your worship, I don't plan a debate. I respect that.
Okay. Thank you.
The comment was made about the benefit to Niagara Falls taxpayers. And the reality is that the more plastic, aluminum, and paper that we pick up through the recycling program that you currently have, curbside, and public spaces, well, when that material is picked up, it is sold by the region. The region gains a financial benefit from that, and that does benefit Niagara Falls taxpayers. And the more we collect and divert from the waste stream, the more money that flows back to Niagara Falls community.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Are there any other questions? Yes, councillor Wynne?
Just to clarify that, it costs us more to pick up all these empty water bottles than we get for the plastic. And the bottled water industry does not buy that recycled plastic. So there's not a market for it. The value of these recycled plastic bottles is extremely low. The burden is falling on us to take care of it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Shaloner? Thank you very much, Mr. Shaloner. I appreciate your...
Your worship, just one point of clarification on the last comment. In fact, our product is 100% recyclable, and today, all the plastic that is collected in the province of Ontario, including Niagara Falls, is sold. It does have a value. It's the third most valuable commodity in the blue box. And when it's manufactured, it becomes carpeting, automotive parts, toys, and clothing.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Excuse me, sir. Would you mind removing your hat and your scarf, if you would, please? Sir? Yes. Could you remove your hat and your scarf, please? In the chamber. Thank you. We're going to ask for a presentation now for Mr. Frank, for a member of the Park and City Committee to come forward. Thank you.
Mayor Salsi and members of council. First, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the Park and City Committee. And I'd like to thank the other speakers that we'll be speaking to, including the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, which has actually provided a little bit of the leadership and made the suggestion originally that we examine the issue of plastic waste in our community. It came to the attention of the Park and the City Committee because of its terms of reference. The terms of reference which you gave us was "active promotion of various initiatives related to beautification and environmental responsibility, and to encourage stewardship of our natural resources." So it came to our attention, the initial request from the Youth's, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. So I just want to point out that the Park in the City was appointed by you, the members of council, and we are a group of credible and responsible advisors to the city, as can be seen by our past performance. Our work with the successful Niagara Falls Schools and Bloom program, our tree planting initiatives, our community clean sweep programs, and many other initiatives that we've taken, I think shows that we are credible members of the community. We have no particular agenda, other than to promote the environmental health of the city of Niagara Falls. And the recommendations that have been made have not been taken lightly, but have been well researched and thought out. And we take some exception to some of the suggestions that really some of the things that we've advised are not well advised, but they have been well thought out, well researched. So I just want to start off by saying that. The Park in the City Committee has also been showing some leadership in the area of the Communities in Bloom program, which we are going to be entering in the year 2009. And one of the mandates of that is to encourage environmental stewardship and sustainability in the community. So this is really where we're starting from. So I just want to remind you that on November 3, 2008, that City Council made the following two recommendations. The first recommendation was that a community information forum be coordinated to gather community and stakeholder input to consider the elimination of sale of bottled water at city facilities, and the follow-up report be provided to council. I want to emphasize the wording there. It's elimination of the sale of bottled water. It is not a ban on bottled water in the facilities. The choice to bring bottled water into the facility is still there, and that's an important item to mention. So we're not talking about a ban. Choice still exists. Secondly, that the use of plastic water bottles be eliminated at city-run meetings. And I'm glad to see right now, here at council, that we don't have plastic water bottles here at the meeting. And to reduce the use of disposable styrofoam and plastic utensils at all city meetings and special events, and to provide an environmentally friendly option. And I congratulate council on passing that particular motion at that time in November. The first of those two motions led to a meeting, which was a public forum that was held on December 4, 2009. And I think Mark just showed you a slide a second ago, if you could go back to that. This was a poster that was, I believe, in the TTC in Toronto. And what we really want to do is to provide a leadership role to reduce the amount of plastic waste here in our own community. And one of the things that we noted was in some of our clean sweep efforts, we noted the large number of plastic waste that was in our community. And we thought, okay, what are some of the ways that we can do that? And there's not a lot that we can do about the plastic waste that is on the street, but what leadership roles could we play? So on December 4, 2009, when we held that community information forum, the purpose of it was to get input from the community and to provide then a follow-up to council in the form of an updated report, which you received. And the Park in the City Committee hosted that particular forum at the Bain Community Centre. The results of that was that there was very positive feedback from all the people that were there at that particular meeting. After a number of concerns, such as the concern that was mentioned earlier about health concerns with fountains, after that was discussed at the meeting, and after assurance from the Health Department that there are no concerns with water fountains, it was, the people that asked those kind of questions were very, very supportive and were willing to be proposing. So there was a follow-up to that too, also in the Niagara Falls review, and we want to acknowledge that, that it was mentioned by Corey LaRocque in an article in December 13. He was encouraging council to act on this bottle ban. And a quote there, "For a city whose name is synonymous with water, it would be symbolic for Niagara Falls to be a leader in this crusade rather than as a follower." And myself, I think that as a tourist community, I think it speaks well for a community that has public water fountains, where we're proud of our own water supply, and people can see that, that we have good, clean drinking water available in our community. So there's three environmental concerns that I like to talk about. The first of those three concerns is the plastic waste itself. The second one is the energy consumption that is used. Whether we recycle or not, the plastic itself, there's various energy concerns. And then, thirdly, there's the issue of water itself. So the first one, plastic waste. Worldwide, some 2.7 million tonnes of plastic are used to bottle water each year. Although the bottles are recyclable, many plastic bottles do end up in landfill sites. And buried water bottles do take a very, very long time to degrade. And that's important in terms of the third item about water issues. If you think about the bottled water that often gets thrown in the trash and it's still half-full, and if you think that trash then ends up in a landfill site, still half-full of water. And then consider the fact that only approximately 1% of all of our water in our world, although we're a planet of water, a very small portion of that water is in fact fresh water. And that what we're basically doing, that water bottle is ending up in a landfill site and it's been taken out of our water cycle. It's no longer part of that water cycle. So that's one of the concerns with water issues. In terms of energy consumption, just going back to that, there's two things involved there with the energy, and that is, first of all, the crude oil that is required to produce the plastic, and secondly, the gasoline that's used in transporting bottled water, both, first of all, to its destination where it's sold, and then, secondly, the pickup of that empty bottle, whether it's recycled or whether it's being thrown away. So going to the issue of the three Rs. We often hear about reduce, reuse, and recycle. What we often forget is that those three words are in a particular order for a reason. Recycle is the third of the three Rs. The first one is reduce, and the second one is reuse. The idea here is that the most important thing to do is to reduce. Secondly, when you can't reduce, you reuse. And when that's no longer possible, you recycle. So the first point, why is recycling the third option, and it's not the final solution? First of all, it's always the best solution is not to produce the waste in the first place. Partly because some of that waste, even when a program is very successful, like it is here in Niagara, Niagara's actually a success story. We heard about that the average in the province, I believe, is something like 60% recycling. We heard from Niagara Recycling that in their audit, that the recycling rate here in Niagara is somewhere around 80%. And that we're very, very successful at recycling. But our very success has become our failure, because when we recycle, often what ends up happening is we get a false sense of security. It's okay to produce the waste because I'm recycling it, when in fact, what that tends to generate is even more waste. So we produce more and more waste because it's okay to waste because we're recycling it. So we forget about the costs that are associated with recycling. So one of the things that increases the cost of this is the fact that PET bottles have an extremely high volume-to-weight ratio. So basically, what you're doing is you're transporting air. So what is happening is your recycling trucks are being filled up with empty plastic bottles. And it's, you're driving around, driving back, and driving back and forth, always filled up because you're basically transporting air. So the volume in that truck per ton is very small. So although the market for this at one time was very, very good, still, what you're doing is you're transporting this air. So there's a high cost in terms of gasoline, in terms of transporting this material. Now, these facts are coming from the, actually, the forum, and it was a presentation that was done by Niagara Recycling to our forum. So this is where these particular facts are coming from. It was mentioned that there is the ability to sell this material. And at one time, before the recession, it was possible to get $440 per ton for this material. The provincial average now has dropped to $110 per ton. And so the market for this material has largely collapsed. Part of the reason for that is that, one of the things that should be mentioned is that the water bottling industry does not reuse the material that they're saying that they are encouraging to be recycled. So the end result is that with the transportation of this material, we're looking for a market, the storage of the material, and the recycling plant, and all of that, there's a cost connected to that. And while the water bottling industry helps to subsidize that, it doesn't pay for the whole cost. You and I, as taxpayers, are paying for part of the cost of that, part of the cost of that. And while definitely recycling is better than throwing it into the garbage, still, there's that cost connected to it. So it's this false sense of security that recycling causes that, which is why recycling, while a good thing, it should be the third of the three Rs. So what are we saying? We're saying that, first of all, what we should be doing is try to reuse. That's a better option. In other words, the recommendation of the Park in the City Committee is to avoid the problem of some issues around that, that some people feel that there's a lack of cleanliness to install long spigots or goose necks on existing water fountains to allow people to refill reusable bottles. And then, as part of the 2009 budget, and this is already there, for example, at the arena, it was mentioned about water fountains being installed. So additional water fountains to provide greater public access to free tap water. The best option of all is to reduce the use or the production of waste in the first place. So currently, we are a throwaway society, and we need to get away from that. And in a sense, recycling feeds into that throwaway society, that it's, as I said earlier, that it's okay to produce the waste. So changing behavior is the most important thing. And some people have said that this is a symbolic gesture. This is a first step. And it's important for the city of Niagara Falls to show leadership. And show leadership that you believe in public water, that you believe in the safety of public water, and that you believe that we need to reduce this waste. So a little bit of comments from the Niagara Region Public Health Department to allay any doubts about our tap water. "The municipal tap water is produced and distributed by regional and local governments under strict provincial standards and legislative controls. There is rigorous testing, which is constantly being done to ensure quality." In fact, if you go to the website of the Niagara Region and look up the statistics for our local water, it's extremely high standards. And we can be very proud of our local water. Since the events that have happened in the past, such as Waterton, where there was some question about the quality of water, since that time, new regulations have been put into place, and Ontario now has the safest and highest-quality standards for water in the world. And taps, spigots, spouts, fountains, et cetera, are common access mechanisms to water distribution systems, and these mechanisms are considered to be safe and appropriate means of accessing drinking water. That's actually a quote from the Niagara Regional Public Health Department, from Glenn Hutchins, who attended our particular meeting. And he sent a letter, which I think may be in your package, to attest to that particular fact. His comment was that "water in distribution systems is under pressure, which prevents the entry of contaminants into the water. Therefore, cross-contamination from one user of a drinking fountain to another should not be anticipated." Our Environment Minister Gord Miller quoted in the Kingston Weight Standard, when Kingston was considering this ban, or this elimination, I shouldn't say the word ban, it really is that choice to bring the bottle in is still there. Municipalities are spending millions of taxpayer dollars to produce the most tested and highest-quality water in the world, and they're quite right to promote it. And that's what we're doing. By promoting our tap water, we are trying to say to the rest of the community, you have a choice to bring the bottle in, but we're trying to change behavior, and we're trying to change attitudes, or we're trying to get people to, once again, to do what they used to do. They used to drink water from water fountains, and nobody had a problem with that. And the issue that was mentioned earlier too about obesity... They used to drink water from water fountains and nobody had a problem with that. And the issue that was mentioned earlier too, about obesity, we want people to drink water. The issue is water from our publicly funded system or water that we purchase. And there is a very high cost to water that people purchase from water bottlers, when you compare it to the price of the water that we get from our taps. So in conclusion, the elimination of the sale of bottled water at city facilities will contribute to the reduction of plastic in both landfill and the time and money spent on recycling. Why? Why will it do that? Well, to do it, because we are setting an example to others. Just as the issue of plastic bags, at one time, everybody used plastic bags and increasingly we're seeing that people are using reusable bags, cloth bags, when they go to grocery stores. It's a groundswell. And this is one of the reasons why Nestle is concerned. Because they know that if the city of Niagara Falls does this, it will have an effect. It will have an effect on the larger community. And it will bring down the amount of waste that we produce. The best approach to managing waste is source reduction. That is our best solution. Not creating the waste in the first place. As such, the Park and the City respectfully encourages council to support the recommendations as outlined in the Plastic Water Bottle Update Report, which is as follows. That the city of Niagara Falls eliminate the sale of bottled water at city-owned facilities, municipal buildings, and recreation facilities and parks, effective May 1, 2009. And that the staff develop a recommended implementation plan to increase the access to and the availability of municipal tap water through public drinking fountains in municipal indoor and outdoor facilities. And outline the cost in the 2009 capital budget for the consideration of council. And just one last point, the Park and the City Committee recognizes the need for bottled water, contrary to what was said earlier, in certain situations. There is a need for bottled water in emergencies. That's understood. In the case of emergencies like a fire and that sort of thing, obviously bottled water sometimes becomes necessary. But that's when it should be used, in the event of an emergency, not for general, ordinary use. Thank you for listening in my words.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Forre. Are there any questions of Mr. Forre? Okay, we'll move on to then the next dictation from the members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. As I mentioned earlier, we have with us Christopher Colinieri and Harish Agarwal. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you very much, Mr. Forre.
Mayor Selsey, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Chris Colinieri.
And I'm Harish Agarwal, and we're some members of this year's Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee.
Before we begin, we would like to play a short excerpt from the 2008 Good Morning America news piece called "The Great Pacific Garbage Patch." Please have a look.
More stages regular trips back to the garbage patch for research. During his latest mission, he noticed an alarming new trend.
This is the highest plastic deployment ratio we've seen, obviously, from this five years ago. Now from a sample taken just this year, the quantities have gone up very dramatically.
More than doubling in five years. Moore says there's no reason to suggest it will ever slow down. And here's something new. Evidence that shows small fish are eating the plastic. So is it entering our food chain?
A fish like this, I've found 26 pieces of plastic, all different colors, inside one stomach.
Birds too are making a meal of it. Large quantities are found in their stomachs. But the biggest debate, how to clean up the garbage patch?
The experts tell us that there's no single silver bullet. We're gonna keep looking, but at the moment, it's not clear what the best course of action would be to, to deal with materials that are already there.
Even Moore agrees, it's virtually impossible to clean up the patch. So stopping it from growing even bigger appears to be the best approach. Beach cleanups like this one from the Ocean Conservancy can help by preventing other ocean dumps from forming. Improving recycling, another solution. Less than 5% of all plastic is recycled globally. Many agree, changing our behavior is the only hope.
The planet is a closed system, so everything that happens on Earth stays on Earth. What we need to do is we need to accept responsibility at a local level and reduce the amount of plastic that's finding its way down our wateringways into the oceans.
It was heartbreaking and disgusting at the same time to see this, all, all of this garbage. And even to open up seabirds and to see big caps, they think it's food, they think it's a shrimp or something that they're going for and they swallow it. There's no proof, they're saying, that it would kill the birds, but there's no nutritional value in this. And if they think it's full and they're not eating for something else, it's kind of cause and effect, Diane.
As you can see, there is a substance and a global environmental need behind this support of our request.
Last spring, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee came to with our request to ban the use of plastic bags. You have done the right thing and heard from the public. We are asking you to make the right decision again and eliminate the sale of plastic bottles in Niagara Falls city buildings. As you heard, globally, less than 5% of plastics is actually recycled. So we should take a small step to improve this and help set the example. Twenty-six other municipalities across Canada have already taken part in the initiative, and it's about time that we do the same.
Our main initiative in the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is youth voice, which is why we have to speak out on this issue. This may not affect you personally, but, but many of you are grandparents or parents, and your children are the ones that will be affected by this, by your decision. The youth should have the same opportunities as everyone else and to have a healthy environment to live in. We look to you, the leaders of today, to take leadership roles and make the right decision. We truly believe that we need to accept responsibility at the local level in order to change things on the national level. This is a large issue, but it is not past the point where we cannot change it. But we have to act quickly and efficiently. We have taken huge steps and taken on huge initiatives to improve our environment in other ways, so why not take another?
With your vote, you can reduce the stress on the environment that is created by plastic bottles. Niagara Falls is a tourist destination because of the beauty of the environment. But most importantly, it is our home. Changing our behavior is our only hope. You are voting for the youth and we trust you, our leaders, to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christopher and Harish. We appreciate your input as the youth of our committee, or city, I should say, and the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee certainly is always welcome to make their comments and advice to the council now. We do have questions from the council. I'll ask Councilor Anony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we go back to my earlier comments about when we ban, if, if the motion is to ban bottles, actually, the Mayor's Youth Advisory took it one step further and asked that we, that we limit, I won't use the word ban, Mr. Forre, let me, limit the sale of any plastic bottle, is what she just said, not specifically just water bottles. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna do, put our money where our mouth is, we should be banning any plastic beverage bottle sold in our arenas if the bottom line is the reduction of waste, not just water bottles. So I'd like to see us go a step further and take all plastic beverage bottles out of our city-run facilities if we're actually going to do what the intent, intent goes for. That takes it a little step further.
Thank you. We do have recommendations in the committee, so Chief, do you want to make a comment?
We don't have any, haven't had any pressure through this report to, to actually take any action in banning plastic bottles from emergency services. And I appreciate that. We're working hard to try and come up with some alternatives, but as it stands at this point, we're still relying on them to, to provide water to the crews when they're in the field fighting fires that they can take with them. There's a contamination issue and, and so they can actually continue to fight fire or do rescues in spot and provide water for themselves, so.
Chief, I think we acknowledge that as well, so we understand the challenge you have in regard. So thank you for the comment. Yes, Councilor Maves?
I, I.
Try it again, please.
No, I, I too am concerned in the fact that if we, if we take the water out, we've got empty shelves in the arena, you're gonna put another, more pop in there for the kids to buy pop? Like when, when your child gets finished playing hockey or soccer, baseball, whatever it is, you go to the, the little convenience area and you're gonna buy another plastic bottle. So I don't think you're gonna really solve anything unless you ban them all. And I really think that, I don't know what the alternative is, to go to glass or, or tin, and you're probably still in the same situation. I think, and we saw this already, well, people using grease in their, in their grains, changing behavior. I think this is what we have to do. But how we do that is, is gonna be another thing. I think maybe staff could, could possibly give them more, so perhaps an idea of what the alternatives are for, for serving these beverages in our, in our concession. I think if you're gonna have the empty space where the water bottles were, sure and heck, you're gonna have some soda pop there or something else. And there you go with your obesity and your diabetes and everything else. So I think we really have to find a total alternative for it.
Thank you.
If it isn't one thing, we should do the whole thing.
Ms. Morrissey, would you have any comment in respect to the questions or concerns of Councilor Maves?
Through your worship, in the past, it was popular to serve beverages in a fountain format. The challenge with that is we don't want to create a cup, a lid, and a straw. However, the industry is moving towards compostable cups. I know we're using them in our own facilities now. We also see the future where a new economy may emerge, where the dispensing of beverages may change. So for example, if you brought your mug of a certain size, it doesn't preempt the fact that you could purchase that water or beverage in the cup, but it will be, I think, a move forward. And I think we've emphasized that the critical point right now is we're not going to eliminate your ability to get water in our facilities. There will still be many sources of water through drinking fountains and through the change room areas. So I think that's critical, but I do agree that we probably should be working towards, if we're serious about eliminating outsource reduction, how we can best have all our facilities generate as little or no waste as possible.
Okay, yes, Councilor Anony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think I'm gonna move the recommendation with, with an amendment to the wording, and it be that the city of Niagara Falls eliminate the sale of plastic beverage bottles as opposed to just bottled water, which would accomplish, takes us even steps farther than just water bottles, it takes all of that sale out of the, out of our facilities.
Okay, there's a second to that motion. Councilor Wing? Okay? Any discussion? Councilor Cario?
You're just moving the first part? You're not moving the second part?
I was moving the whole, whole part, but I was just inventing the first part.
I think this is why some of the people sit at home and shake their heads at some of the things we do. So we're gonna move number one, that says that we eliminate the sale, and then we're gonna find out what it costs later. So in the second, in the second one is that we're gonna get the outline from the staff of what this is gonna cost the taxpayer. But we're prepared to just march ahead and eliminate the sale of these drinks, and it doesn't really matter what the staff comes back with to put in new fountains or to, and we're just gonna, is that the suggestion?
Councilor Wing?
It's costing us money anyhow to recycle and to landfill all these beverage containers. It's also not environmentally friendly, and I'd like to remind the council that this year, we are in the Provincial Communities in Bloom competition. And environmental awareness, which this addresses, is one of the categories on which we are being judged this year. You know, it is not sustainable to continue the practice that we have developed as a society of all these throwaway plastic beverage containers. You know, it costs us money to recycle them, it costs us money to landfill them. It just makes sense to put more fountains into public buildings. You know, these are, these, this is infrastructure. You know, it helps the taxpayers to make public, safe public drinking water available to them in city facilities for free. Then they don't have to spend their money on drinking water or on pop or on anything else. So you know, it's, this is a step forward. We're trying to be leaders, we're actually, we're not even being leaders anymore, we're following a trend that other municipalities are doing. And really, if we're gonna be serious about trying to compete in Communities in Bloom and not get kicked, you know, we really have to do this sort of thing. We've taken the, the Blooms out of the budget, we're not gonna be planting a bunch of flowers this year to impress the judges. What we have to rely on is what Communities in Bloom really looks for, which is the long-term sustainability and those kind of efforts, the long-term into the future efforts to, to prove that we are serious. And you know, just something else, it, this just goes a little bit beyond the finances, but there's a longstanding position at AMO to support this sort of thing. The U.S. Conference of Mayors encourages cities to phase out where feasible government use of bottled water and promote the importance of municipal water. You know, that's, that's what this is all about too. We pay a lot of money to keep our water safe and clean. We have a big investment in that, and this is promoting its importance, which the minister said is fine for us to do. And even the Ontario Municipal Water Solution, our Water Association supports this sort of thing. They are the voice of Ontario's public water supply authority. So this is just following good practice, promoting something that we invest a lot of money in. So yes, it might cost a little bit to put some, some more fountains in, but we're gonna save in other areas.
Thank you. I have comments from Ms. Morrissey, then Councilor Cario, Councilor Diadati, and Councilor Peter Angelo.
Through your worship, to address Councilor Cario's question in some facet, I think what you're gonna start see evolving is a, a different approach to facility design. And traditionally, we haven't put water fountains in in the, in the recent future. However, in the Gale Centre, we put a tremendous effort towards that because we believed in the environmental leadership. We in the McBain Centre started with that, and we're adapting even at this point. However, we believe in an industry from Parks and Rec that you're gonna see a change potentially in an effort to have the building code modified, to have that as a base inclusion. As well, it's gonna be fundamental to accessibility issues as well. Many drinking fountains are very accessible to our, our colleagues that have disabilities or are in wheelchairs, and all of those things are sort of meshing together. So just to address that, while there, there are some concerns in the Public Health Department from both London, and we believe our regional public health have spoken fairly clearly on their support of this, we believe that you're gonna see an evolution, particularly from the OBC, Ontario Building Code, and positions coming up from Parks and Recreation Ontario as well, fully supporting this approach in terms of all future facility design in Parks and Rec.
Councilor Cario?
Thank you, worship. I'm not suggesting that I don't like the idea. I'm only suggesting that it would have been nice for the council to have some idea on what we're voting on is gonna cost the taxpayer. It would have been nice, is it $5,000, $50,000? And we're gonna start to retrofit some of our buildings to allow for fountains and other ways to, to be able to get drinking water. I would have liked to know how much it's gonna cost before I stick my head in the sand and vote on something. That's all, I just would have liked to know that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the other question I had was, if we include all plastics, are we hurting any of our other groups that rent our facilities that count on the sale of, of soft drinks or whatever to support their groups?
Thank you. Ms. Morrissey?
I'm sorry, the reason we didn't have the cost is we were gonna be recommending it to you in the draft, draft capital budget. However, if we, if we tiered it over three years and we addressed right now where we don't have water fountains, and that's primarily in our parks. So for example, if we went to Oaks, went to Kerr, went to Palmer, and went to Cummings, the average is about $5,000 a water fountain in Kaler because the water lines exist. And then we would move forward with other parks that currently don't have water fountains. So we'd probably be looking at $35,000 potentially for consideration in the first year, including them in facilities that currently have nothing, and in many cases, there's no sale there either. And then over the years, we could retrofit other facilities based on council's approval. To speak to your other question, we currently don't have any prohibit, prohibit, anything prohibiting us for what we sell. We decide what we purchase by the bottle. The only place where it would affect in terms of a lease agreement is our concession provider at the McBain Centre. And he does the vending as well as the overcounter. He is knowledgeable of the fact about the water. But expanding that to all beverages isn't included in plastic, but many do vend, or sorry, many do provide service in bottles. The reason we don't have bottles in arenas is because they're deemed to be projectiles. People can toss them, throw them in the glass breaks, so that's why plastic was sort of the, the way to go in the arena. So that's the background.
But the motion would include all plastic bottles, so it would affect that person? And what about anyone else at, at the arenas? What about at the arenas?
Ms. Morrissey?
Currently, the, the direct sale of beverages is the responsibility of the city. While there may be other groups selling within our facilities for special events, we've actually addressed that going forward to the Gale Centre in terms of centralization. But we would have to work with those groups that come in on a fundraising capacity with SOPs that have to have non-alcohol, to make sure that they sold it in non-plastic containers.
Thank you. Mr. Beaman, did you wish to make comment as our solicitor?
I think Ms. Morrissey, I was just a little bit concerned if we go down the road of a complete ban of plastic bottles before examining our obligations under any concession agreements we have, might be a risk there. I understand that, particularly that concessionaire wasn't concerned about water sales, so there's, that's already been cleared with him, but I don't know that he's aware about this proposal for further plastic bottles. And it might be at least a courtesy to discuss it with him before taking action, if I'm suggesting.
Certainly. Councilor Diadati?
Just a question, your worship.
Just a question, your worship, and I like the idea of where this is going in terms of being more responsible and showing concern, discussion, education, especially with your youth advisor. I think this is a great direction. My question was, and I want to make sure as Councilor Cario that we think this through, because what's to stop them from then offing the products in cans, juice boxes? I mean, there's a lot of alternatives to bottles, which may be just as, you know, just as, you know, what's the word I'm thinking of? Detrimental toward our environment, maybe, but just in a different way. So I'm just wondering, you know, do we need to take a sober thought? I mean, I love the direction we're going. I think it's a great idea. But do we need to at least, as it's been mentioned, talk to our vendors, look at our agreements, and look at our options? Because if we're just going to ship them into something else, I don't know if we'll have accomplished our objective.
Thank you. Councilor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I think a lot of good points have been made by council members around the table. I'd like to thank the two young gentlemen here from Mayak, as well as Mr. Four. I think they made some very convincing points. I'd just like to say, first of all, your worship, that I guess we as city council members, we basically have control of and we direct our own public water services. And because we do that, I think that we should make a strong stand towards the commitment of our public water service. I don't think that people generally understand that they pay twice in the sense that they're paying to get the water to their house, and then that recycled bottle that they throw in the recycling bin, they're also paying to have that recycled. I think that if they knew that, perhaps they would think differently. Your worship, I don't think that people know that the last time that the Ministry of the Environment rated our water treatment plant that we received a 100% rating. Perhaps we don't do a good enough job of, I guess, publicizing that. The other point I'd like to speak to, your worship, is the fact that we need to change our behaviors as a society, and I know that other people have already spoken about that as well. I don't think that we're telling people that we don't want them to drink water, or we don't want them to drink pop or anything like that. I think what we're trying to tell them is that we want them to be more environmentally friendly, and we want them to consume it in ways other than recyclable material. We're challenging people, your worship, to think long-term. We need to, we need to change the culture that's in place right now. It's too easy to, I guess, go to the garage or wherever you keep your bottled water, grab a bottle of water, drink it, and then throw it in the recycle bin and think, geez, I did a great job because I recycled that bottle. That's not the fact, your worship. And I guess that that's the mind frame that we have to change, and we as city stewards, we have the ability to effect that change. So, your worship, I think that we do need to show leadership, and it's up to us to not only promote reusable containers, but it's also up to us to promote our public water system. And to do this, your worship, I think that the motion that stands on the floor is a good one, and we need to lead by example.
Thank you. I have Councilor Anoni next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the reason I was comfortable taking it one step further was Ms. Morrissey explained that the fountain pop is there. You can buy fountain pop, and now we have now segued ourselves into those cups are recyclable. So the alternative is available to them there. It just won't be in a Gatorade bottle, which is twice the size of a water bottle, and it will be in a pop bottle.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for the members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee? Lieutenant, I'll let you sit down, but thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate that. Members of council, we do have a motion before us. I'm going to call the motion, to call the vote, unless you have any other comments. So at this time, all those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda, is the matter of planning meeting. I'd like to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed tourist home at 3800 Bridgewater Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 23, 2009, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'm going to ask the Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. This property involves 3800 Bridgewater Street. That's up the corner of Bridgewater and Laura C. Court Place. That's a very recognizable property in the community. It is the Laura C. Court House. The applicants are proposing adding a guest room for tourists in the area above the garage. You can see the garage in this photograph. The property is located, as I've stated, the corner of Bridgewater and Laura C. Court Place in Shipewa. The site plan before you shows that the location of the actual dwelling on the property does say that there are additions to the houses, was the site plan that was drawn up at the time that the house was renovated, probably 20 years or so ago. The, so we have the existing brick building extending to the top of the plan in front of you is the addition with the garage at the top end of the drawing. The property is designated, sorry, minor commercial in our official plan. The property has been used for residential purposes for a number of years, back since the mid-1800s. The city's official plan recognizes the residential use as a permitted use within the zoning bylaw, and therefore is deemed to comply with the official plan. We consider bed and breakfast or tourist homes to be ancillary uses to residential uses, and therefore they're considered compatible with surrounding residential neighborhood. The proposal before you, the current zoning on the property is residential, single-family 1D, our 1D zone. The applicant is seeking permission to add a site-specific provision to allow one bedroom to be used for a bed and breakfast or what officially is called a tourist home. The bedroom is above the garage, as I noted. There's no expansion to the dwelling. The parking space will be provided one of the garage spaces. There is a space available then for the residents of the property. In 1983, there were a number of approvals that were given to this property through the Committee of Adjustment to recommend that we incorporate those into the zoning bylaw. Those include the front yard setback, rear yard setback, exterior side yard setback. These are all existing. As well, there would be an increase in the lot coverage from 40% to 50%. This represents the, reflects the actual footprint of the dwelling on the property. There's no addition proposed. The land is actually two lots on a registered plan, and we're recommending that we also address that so that the whole of the land would be treated as one lot. Therefore, we can support the zoning bylaw amendment, and we are recommending to council that they approve the zoning bylaw amendment application to recognize the existing dwelling on the land and permit it to be used as a bed and breakfast with one bedroom available for tourists. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant at this time who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, and council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. Is there, yes, would you come forward, please, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members and staff, thank you for your time this evening. My wife and myself, Natalie, would like to thank you for hopefully considering to amend the, sorry, the last one, turn it back here.
The bylaw?
The bylaw, thank you, sir. For us to establish a bed and breakfast. Since we live there in the last five years, give or take a month or two, it's been constantly, people have stopped by. They're always, if you will, giving us kudos and commendations for what we've done with the house and so on and so forth. Every year, come October and/or April, little girls are stopping by to do their history projects on Laura C. Court. And it was just, we've actually had many people, we've actually asked us and request that, is this a bed and breakfast? Could we stay here? And we've actually had people walk in off the street thinking it was a museum, as my son's sitting watching television. It's, can I help you? Oh, it's not a museum. No, it's not. Sorry. It's a private house. Again, the love, the finance, and the appreciation that we have for the home, and we would just like to, if we could, better it and feel a source of income, although it would be minor being that it's only one bedroom and it's a limited timeframe from hopefully June to September possibly, could actually go back into the home. Because as the city's probably well aware, we appreciate the money that has come forth, but there's a long, long, long way to go yet. So on that, I would say thank you and hope you consider us.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. There may be some questions to members of council. So, Councilor Fisher?
Thank you. Now, I've been very connected to this home, and it's, you have done a fabulous job. The neighbors, though, have questioned, have you provided or will you provide an on-site parking spot for your overnight bed and breakfast?
Right now, we have the two-guard garage. We would make one of those very available, or if possible, we would, we've also inquired, if you will, with regards to purchasing a parking meter or a parking permit.
Because the garage, you would be parked over top the sidewalk, so if you could do a parking meter, I think they would be very satisfied that, that would be their recommendation. And other than that, when the time comes, I will support it.
Any other questions, members of council? Councilor Wing?
I'd just like to note that the Boyd's have been very diligent in working with the Municipal Heritage Committee and coming to the committee about any proposed changes. And I'd like to thank and congratulate them for this. And I'd just like to say, this is really great. What a way to celebrate and share our history with the rest of the world. I mean, the opportunity to stay in a house that Laura C. Court lived in for a great many of her years is really a great concept. So good luck.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Boyd? Okay, having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Moved by Councilor Fisher, seconded by Councilor Thompson. The recommendation you have before you. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Members of council, we have some miscellaneous planning matters. The first one is PD 2009-114, proposed streetscape and beautification improvements for Queen Street. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I would like to move the report, and I think that this is a great opportunity to immediately upgrade and give the street a new look and a fresh look, and I think this is a great move forward, and I would move the report.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Fisher. Yes, we have comments from our planner, Mr. Hurlovich?
Yes, your worship, I just want to make one correction under recommendation two. It should say commit $450,000 rather than $550,000. The total should add up to $550,000.
$450,000 from the fund, and then $10,000 from the reach back, correct?
A hundred thousand, that's correct.
A hundred, sorry, $100,000, yes. So a total of $550,000, correct? Members of council, you're aware of that? We have a move or a second, or it is here, but it's incorrectly stated. And we have the recommendation before us. All those in favor? Sorry, I'm sorry, council, yes?
Yeah, I'm astounded we'd even consider this in a recession. I mean, here we've been cutting all kinds of things out. You know, we can't even find it in our hearts to give $6,000 for the YWCA to try and keep them afloat in the good work that they do. And we're willing to pay for a statue and a clock tower and murals on a private building. You know, this is astounding. You know, we have other, we have other BIAs in the city that are doing streetscaping as well, but they're paying for it themselves. Lundby's Lane paid for those red and black benches that were put in last summer. Main and Ferry for the past several years has been socking 95% of its levy away each year to build up enough funds to pay for its streetscaping. Main and Ferry is going to pay for its own streetscaping. I think Clifton Hill and Falls View and Victoria Centre have all paid for their own streetscaping. I mean, are we thinking about setting some sort of precedent here where, okay, you want streetscaping, we'll do it for you? You know, we already did it 20 years ago for Queen Street. That's only 20 years ago. They got new infrastructure, they got new sidewalks, all kinds of things, new street lamps. I, if we wanted to start paying for streetscaping, then when Clifton Hill comes in, hat in hand, and wants us to pay for their streetscaping, how do we say no? When Falls View comes in, wants us to pay for their streetscaping, how do we say no? And how can we even think about paying for things like statues and clock towers and murals on private buildings in an economic time like this? I mean, we're going to finish up this meeting later on this evening and move into corporate services and pull out those scissors and start cutting similar. Yet here we are, adding things in that weren't even contemplated in the budget, make absolutely no fiscal sense whatsoever. Like, this has got to be the craziest thing I've ever seen. And further on in our agenda, there's even, I don't know if this was supposed to even get in here or not, it looks like an interdepartmental memo or something from Ella Hurdovich saying, this report's been deferred to allow a list of beautification priorities to be submitted by the full BIA. This report is not to come back until the Downtown Joint Steering Committee has looked at the report, which could be a long time from now since Sam Grun has not provided a list of appointees. And this is only February 11 report. I mean, I think we're being really premature here. My motion is to defer this.
We do have a motion on the floor at this point, so we have speakers.
And I'm moving deferral.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have some speakers. We have Councilor Cario, Councilor Anoni, and Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. My question was, can this money be taken out and put back in the budget? Can this $450,000, it has to be used for this? Why is that, Mr. Wing?
Why should we?
Why should we not take it back and put it?
Through the chair, these monies were borrowed through long-term debenture initially for the several studies and plans that were dealing with the downtown revitalization. Approximately, at least 60% of those funds have been used for those studies and plans. Several months ago, those studies and plans were actually terminated, and the funds sat in the base, unused. And in fact, if they are not to be used for the downtown revitalization, such as these kinds of expenditures, we would essentially park those monies and use those monies to pay back the long-term debenture.
So then the answer to my question is yes. We could use the money to pay back the long-term debenture rather than spend it on statues and whatever. So we could use it to pay back the long-term. Because somehow, somebody's got to come up with the money to pay back the long-term debenture, the taxpayers of Niagara Falls.
That's correct.
So this money could be used to pay back the debenture in a time when we don't have any money. I agree with Councilor Wing. I don't see how we could not keep some of that money back, no. Maybe we could match the region. Maybe we can put $100,000 of the $450,000 and match the region and keep $350,000 and use it to pay back. We don't need it for what it was intended. Nice try to get the money to use it for statues, but I'm not, I'm not for that.
Okay. We have Councilor Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was surprised to see this, too, because I sat with you in the Senior Staff Committee meeting where we had this discussion, and if I understood that in that meeting at that time, you were going to, they were going to ask for priorities, and the downtown was asked to submit priorities. This is a wish list in a time we can't provide a wish list to the residents, let alone to a specified area. And let me remind council, we took beautification and landscaping money out of our operational budget for the entire city, and now we're going to give half a million dollars to the downtown, and the taxpayers are on the line to pay that debt back. Like, come on. I think somebody needs to have a talk with the downtown BIA and ask them, do they watch council? And see how we keep repetitively sending our senior staff back to struggle to bring us cut after cut after cut that are becoming political cuts? They're at the end of their rope. They can't cut anymore. We still have a million-dollar shortfall, and we want somebody on Tarozy who can't get street improvements, and I'm using just as an example, the street improvement done there because we're going to cut it out of the budget, but we're going to give the downtown half a million? We'd have to have our heads examined, and then we'd have to tell the residents why we went contrary to an election that told us, the majority of the residents do not want us to funnel their tax money into the downtown.
Yes, I have, uh, Councilor Thompson and Councilor Maves.
Well, I, I think that, uh, this is a, a crucial decision, um, I think that this is, uh, something that goes right to the heart of the downtown, and I think it's a very easy decision, either you want to support the downtown, or you don't want to support the downtown. And I think we're at a crossroads here now, with respect to the development, there's been substantial progress made, and this is, uh, in my opinion, a crucial period of time, when we're going to determine whether the downtown is going to move forward or not. And it's not just the fact of spending money, uh, every building, uh, in the downtown, uh, provides taxes to the municipality, uh, at one time, it was a major source of employment, and there are still a great number of jobs down there, and this is, uh, on its own, uh, an opportunity for job creation. These monies were set aside, uh, by a previous council, uh, to make sure that, uh, the downtown went ahead, and there was a basic decision to make that happen. Um, in my opinion, and you got a hundred thousand dollars from the region, and we have, uh, monies, uh, through a previous fund to make this happen, and if you don't, I can assure you, and there's already, which I was very surprised, a substantial business downtown that has just left recently, which was really a surprise to me, because I, uh, thought that they were doing exceptionally well. Uh, the little flower shop, if you're shaking your head, so, um, I didn't want you to think that I was saying something that wasn't accurate. Anyway, um, we talk about the Main and Ferry Street area, uh, we have supported everything that, uh, they have requested, and I can tell you, if you go over the spending and the, uh, capital works that is going to be carried out in that particular area, it's not five hundred thousand dollars, it's, uh, several millions of dollars, is that an accurate statement over the next few years, uh, Mr. Doolick? With, with, uh, uh, Main Street, where Ferry Street, the, uh, changes that are being contemplated there, plus, plus the museum, plus, uh, plus, uh, the possible changes to the market, nobody is objected to that, we want that to be just as successful also.
Your Worship, in the, in the two thousand eight, uh, capital budget, uh, there were significant expenditures planned in the area, not just the museum, but, uh, roadworks.
Roadworks, yeah.
Of course, those will be subject to approvals in two thousand nine when it comes back afterwards, council.
Yep, so, anyway, uh, I think, I think there's a, a real, uh, uh, loss of, uh, uh, opportunity here, I think that, uh, we should have a report to this council, telling us how much, uh, revenue the city derives from the downtown, and if it's, uh, all vacant, uh, what is the loss in that? I think this is an investment, and this is not going to be a long-term, ongoing investment, uh, for the next, uh, ten years, this is something that we're trying to get this, uh, downtown going, and I was, uh, certainly, uh, uh, not in favor of spending millions of dollars, as was being suggested initially, but, uh, this is, uh, in my opinion, a, a small step towards, uh, making that happen, not only for the downtown, for the Main and Ferry, and, uh, the other areas that we can help and support, uh, in spite of the difficult times.
Okay, and Councilor Maves?
It's not going to whistle this time? Uh, anyway, I'm just wondering, perhaps you can, uh, Mr. Doolick, you can answer that, if we don't go ahead with this, do we lose the hundred thousand from the region?
Mr. Doolick?
Yes, Your Worship, yes, the, the hundred thousand, it's already been, uh, held over for a year, uh, it is on a matching basis, so we don't take advantage of it this year, uh, so, we're just going to then, uh...
So, we have, we have to spend at least a hundred thousand?
Yep, I think, uh, I think, uh, as, as Carrillo suggested, maybe we take a hundred thousand of that to get the matching dollars from the region, so, you know, we're spending a lot of the dollars on approvals for downtown, and then use the, the remaining monies to help repair the debentures that, uh, have occurred with the downtown works today.
Okay, do we have to spend the whole hun, four hundred and fifty thousand, or can that be, like, I'm looking at the list, and it's quite an extensive list of, of items on there, uh, the murals, and the statue, and various other things, is there some things that can be pared out of that, and still don't lose the hundred thousand, or?
Uh, Your Worship, I think, if, if, the money for the region is really a hundred thousand dollars, uh, based on, on, on the program downtown, because the council says we're only going to commit a hundred thousand to take advantage of the regional dollars, and, uh, then we have to go back to the downtown, saying, all we have is two hundred thousand dollars, there may be some other stipulations.
But, some of these things can be eliminated in here?
Well, if we only have two hundred thousand dollars, then things would be eliminated.
Priorities.
Um, and then we have to prioritize, as, as Councilor Carrillo said.
And like, I'm looking at a bench for eighteen hundred dollars, that's a pretty expensive bench. Fifteen bench, twenty?
Uh, yes, benches are expensive, but I, I think, you know, if there are concerns that council has, you may want to prioritize, uh, maybe only on city infrastructure, you know, maybe not on, maybe not on statues.
No, I'm not opposed to spending the money, it's, it's just that I, I know the sidewalks are in bad repair, um, they're all over the place, and, and, and there's certainly, there's things to be done, and, and I think the idea here is, it's not that we don't want it, but I'm just wondering if we can pare it down, and maybe save the taxpayers a little bit of money, as Councilor Carrillo said, and as Councilor Thompson says, we, we've got to do something to bring that, to bring that up.
If, if, uh, let's say, uh, see, if you say, no, we're only going to get a hundred thousand, if you match the hundred from the region, yes, if you say, oh, you guys, two hundred thousand dollars, and set up your priorities and go, go forward, if there's any other conditions, and this council wishes to place on that money, now we can try, if there are certain things we don't want to spend, uh, and we would like to do that, I think.
But if you could cut out a hundred and fifty out of this, then we'd still be saving the taxpayers a hundred and fifty thousand, wouldn't we?
Yes, yeah.
And we'd still be accomplishing a lot of the cleanup of Queen Street, so, maybe we just need to defer this, to come back with some, some better and more accurate figures, exactly what we want, and see if we can't pare it down, uh, somewhat.
I'll, I'll ask if council does defer, if, uh, if it's a correction, how much money can be available, if they simply say, we can provide a hundred thousand to match the regions, go ahead and get two hundred thousand, and go back, saying, this is all we have available, you have to understand, when we first talked about, they had about, really over a million dollar masks, we said, oh, this is all we have available, uh, the, uh, the city, the regions, we're divided, and the council says, no, all you got available is two hundred thousand dollars, and go back to the downtown, saying, this is what we have available, what are your priorities based on the hundred thousand dollars that we have available?
Yeah, no, I'm looking at things like, it's this pavement reinstatement, that figure seems low, so, I really, I just don't like the figures, and I think if we rejig the figures, it's not that we don't want to give the downtown, and, and we don't want to lose the hundred thousand, but I think, I'd like to take a better look at some of these figures here, so, I'm, I'm not exactly sure whether I want to defer it, or whether, uh, but I, I, I don't see us passing it in its present form, but as I say, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing something for downtown.
Because I, again, I have, the council does defer, is, uh, those corrections, you know, the steps to what we do, um, and if there's going to be limits on the dollars, and say, this is all you have available, then we can come back with a, a prioritized list based on the dollar amount council's going to spend.
Thank you, members of council, we do have, uh, Mr. Don Weaver here, he's, uh, from the Board of Directors of the, the BIA, I'd like to ask your indulgence to allow him to speak, please. Uh, moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Thompson, all those in favor, motions, motions, Carrillo, please come forward, Mr. Weaver. And I should just inform you that, uh, maybe Mr. Weaver will be doing this, that they are establishing a priority, and I, I think, uh, they're working on it as we speak, but, Mr. Weaver, you might want to qualify that.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, the BIA's statements, which, uh, it is our intention, very much experienced, uh, by, so, I think there are a few items on here that maybe aren't very correctly put, also, and, and, uh, prepared reinstatement, uh, these, uh, turnoff areas on Collins Street, we have, uh, actually, like, the, 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 and, 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 and the beautification, and they're working, uh, actually, that's a big, uh, kind of, uh, on the, uh, plan, all of our factories this year, uh, about the flowers, all the birds, and, and, things, we, 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 uh, you know, that program, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, they come back, uh, and, uh, she came around, uh, pavement reinstatement of power washing, this is, uh, because if you don't do a, a response, I would expect the city, uh, 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 so, this is actually only that the city will have to, anyway, other than, uh, 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 for parking spaces, that is to create a, uh, 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 waste money, uh, 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 uh,
Please, please pay attention. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
A deferral motion takes precedence, so we have to deal with the deferral motion. My suggestion is that maybe you just defer the expenditure, expenditure of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the easiest way to deal with it.
I think we're trying to say the same thing. That's right. Okay, I think that's fair. So, we do have a motion to defer?
Just to clarify, I made the deferral motion. My motion is to defer all of recommendation two, everything to do with the money. The clerk has explained, a couple of weeks isn't going to make a difference. And one of the things that staff can report back on is if there's other ways to avail ourselves of that hundred thousand from the region. So, the motion is to defer all of recommendation two.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to defer recommendation number two, and I'm going to call the vote, it's the pleasure of council. So, at this point, on the referral, only on number two, all in favor. One, two, opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, the motion is defeated. Councillor Thompson?
I'll make the motion that we put the hundred thousand dollars forward at this time to get the regional and refer the balance to a future report.
Staff and BIA? Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, again, the original seconder councillor Fisher. We have that motion on the floor, is that cleared, everybody? I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand, one, two, three, four, five, six, opposed. One, two. Motion is carried. Thank you very much, members of council. We'll move on to the next item. I'm sorry? No, that was part of councillor Thompson's motion. Okay, thank you. Move on. Members of council, I want to begin this evening by highlighting some important and positive news for our community. First of all, I'd like to extend special thanks to our federal minister, Rob Nicholson, and the federal government, along with Mr. Kim Crater, our MPP and provincial government, who announced their joint support of our Lundys Lane Battlefield Legacy Project to the tune of more than six point four million dollars. This is a worthwhile project that will see the museum revitalized, it will provide educational opportunities for visitors, students, and families for many years to come. And this significant investment will serve as a catalyst for more improvements to our historic Drummingville CIP area as we move forward with plans to retrofit the farmers' market and encourage private investment there. This project will now be a highlight of the two thousand and twelve, fourteen bicentennial events. As well, the provincial government recently released its report on the future of tourism, Discovering Ontario, MPP Greg Sabar visited Niagara Falls to share his findings. We're pleased to hear of many positive recommendations in that highlight Niagara Falls as a leader in tourism as we move to strengthen and grow the industry. If suggestions in Sabar's report are implemented, we would see the provincial investment in Niagara, Toronto, and Ottawa as the three major tourist destinations in the province. We'd also like to see a stronger link, a transportation link, namely the Go Transit between Niagara Falls and Toronto as well, in his recommendation. In addition, we are pleased to hear of the province's support of the ease of travel at our international borders and with our partners around the globe. Another positive announcement was made by the two thousand and fifteen Pan Am Games Bid Committee. As a response to our request for sporting venues in Niagara Falls during the Games, we have learned that Niagara Falls will be deemed the official welcome site for the two thousand and fifteen Games. This is great news as it will mean that our community will be promoted as the welcome center to the more than twenty, or two hundred and fifty thousand visitors and ten thousand athletes to the Games. We have proposed that the Niagara Civic and Convention Center is our potential welcome location and a one point two to one point five million dollar capital investment will be made to the proposed welcome center site. This extraordinary development comes at no cost to the local taxpayer and we are very proud to have chosen, have been chosen as the bid committee's welcome destination for the two thousand and fifteen Games. That announcement for them to be selected as the Pan Am Games host for Canada would be made in November of this year. Last week, our city hosted Niagara's Second Annual Industrial Trade Show. We are working harder than ever to encourage and support our local industry and I was pleased to welcome Minister of Economic Development, Mr. Michael Bryant, to address Niagara's trade delegates. I'd like to commend Serge Felicetti, along with Mr. Brian York, his counterpart in the St. Catherine's Business Development Office, for their efforts to chair this innovative and successful trade event once again this year. I'd also like to thank the community for their overwhelming support of this year's mayor and council's chili cook-off for Project Share. The event drew a wonderful crowd of people to experience our local culinary arts, to go head-to-head, to show off their chili cooking expertise. Many thanks to volunteers at Project Share and from around our city for making this event a wonderful success. Congratulations to the People's Choice winners, Chip and Charlie's, and also the judges' select committee was Edgewater's Restaurant. As we look ahead to the coming weeks, I'd like to inform and welcome members of council to the Chamber, to the Chamber of Commerce lunch on Thursday, February twenty-sixth, where I've been asked to give my annual State of the City address, address I should say. Tickets for the lunch can be purchased by contacting the Chamber of Commerce. As well, I'd like to mention that the upcoming Best of the Best Hockey Event hosted by the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, February twenty-eighth, we will celebrate the rich hockey history that we have in our city as we invite players back from OHL teams, the Flyers and the Thunder, to support the hockey stars of tomorrow. This will be an exciting event in the support of the new Giel Center and the many young people that will be getting their start at the new rinks in the years to come through our new four-pack facility. That concludes my comments for this evening. Move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. The first item on the agenda is requests for Mr. Brian Sinclair, solicitor, request for reconsideration, opposed to the committee of adjustment decision. Members of council, we have requests by Mr. Sinclair to speak, motion by councillor Fisher, second by councillor Carey Hurlowich's presentation. Yes, councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I need to declare a conflict on this, my father owns property directly across the street.
Okay, so noted, thank you. I'll call the vote for Mr. Sinclair to speak, all those in favor, motion's carried. Welcome, Mr. Sinclair, thank you. Some right there to your left. A little better?
In other words, this is strictly an infilling situation, strictly infilling, surrounded by, by four houses on the one side, another house on the other side, around the corner. Two point four acres. The province, under the provincial policy statement, does not allow severances of prime agricultural lands. My respectful opinion, the lands of Willoughby are not prime. I think we, I think we all know that anybody that's been out there knows that that's not true. The region calls it good agricultural land, that's probably questionable as well. I think that really this two point five, two point three four acre parcel is not, is not viable for agriculture. It's not, nobody's going to farm it, it's a state lot itself. What pilot Keggy did here, she wanted to sever it, she's going to build a house, she doesn't want to cut two or two point three four acres, she doesn't mind cutting one point one six. And if you really look at this thing, I think it's, it really adjustments if they thought this was a new situation, something that will not be repeated. Obviously, like, I hear this, everybody's going to bring out the cases for severance. I think this is unusual in the sense that you're surrounded by houses, it's a, it's certainly an infilling situation, it's unique in itself, it's never going to be used agriculture. As a matter of fact, nineteen sixty-seven, the property immediately for the west sixty acres, I was involved in purchasing it, two hundred dollars, I was very cheap. You drive up there now, forty, fifty years later, there's still that apartment. So, I mean, with a two point, two point three four acre parcel, obviously, nobody's going to farm it, it's going to be used as a residence, she's going to go her house, she's going to build a apartment later. But fortunately, to, to have a two point three four acre facility, to, to take this to the territorial listening board is crazy, right? You get the provincial policy statement, it's not prime agricultural, you get the regional policy plan, you get this road plan, it's, it's been working, it's been working on the next fifty years, probably. It's not going to be different now, they have two houses on this one piece of land. It's a lot of, so, once again, four houses on the one side, one house on the other side, certainly an infilling situation. No way back, let's do whatever. Run, run, it's an expense, the territorial board, I have, I hear, I think it's crazy, it's too much, too much, something that's not going to affect the city of Niagara Falls, it won't affect the area out there, it's absolutely no effect. It's going to be different now, the city, the province, it's crazy, it's crazy, it's just cannot be avoided, it shouldn't have been, it's a time waste, the city's time waste, it's crazy. I can understand the provincial policy statement, I understand the regional policy plan, I understand the road plan, I think these things are, are affecting the very best. When you get a piece of property in the country, you shouldn't be able to sever it, obviously, you build a house, and it's wrong. You get a piece of property like this, which is unusual, unique in itself, you should be able to, that's what your committee of adjustment said. They said it will affect the Niagara Falls, it's a fight right, it's a, it should be, it should not, it should not be avoided on the territorial point, I ask you to withdraw your appeal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hurlowich, do you wish to make a comment, please, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Worship. Staff brought this to council's attention a couple of months ago.
Excuse me, the clerk's just advising, we should have really a motion for reconsideration first. Mr. Clerk, would you qualify that, please?
Well, I guess, you can hear Mr. Hurlowich, but, you know, I guess it doesn't, you want to hear the information first?
Okay, Mr. Hurlowich, please go ahead.
Yes, staff brought this to council's attention a few months ago. The committee of adjustment did grant a minor, or a severance of this property, it's a property that the same family has already got two new lots on. The provincial policy statements do not allow the creation of new non-farm residential properties. That's exactly what this person is doing, it's a non-farm residential property. It's a two-acre property. Now, they want to split it into a one-acre property. And it violates the provincial policy statement. It's contrary to your own municipal policy that says you won't allow severances for non-farm use in the rural area, in the good general agricultural area. So, your own policy, the, the committee, in fact, did not listen to your policies, we brought it to your attention, and you concurred that this was violated, the provincial policy, it violated your municipal policy, and it's contrary to the regional policy. And in fact, the region had allowed in this area, state residential lots, they withdrew that approval last year in order to, to be consistent with the provincial policies, it's a requirement of this council to be consistent. Unfortunately, Mr. Sinclair is of the belief that these are not prime agricultural lands. Within the province of Ontario, these are class three lands and considered prime by the province. It's not so much whether these lands are going to be farmed, I agree, one acre is not going to be farmed. But we introduced new non-farm residential lots out there, we're now required to provide bus service for children to go to school, we have to provide garbage collection, we have to provide fire service. These are all the kinds of services that we're now providing into a rural area which we provide, you know, we expect to provide for urban municipalities, urban areas. So, these are compounding a bad situation. And therefore, we believe that the committee was wrong in making its decision and this council concurred, we filed an appeal with the board.
Okay, now, members of council, you have questions for Mr. Hurlowich? Yes, councillor, I know that.
Mr. Hurlowich, when was the last time staff ever brought to council an appeal of a committee of the whole, I'm sorry, committee of adjustment decision? I don't remember this very often, if ever.
I believe we have brought something, in the twenty years I've worked for the city, twice maybe?
So, you felt strongly enough to overrule your committee, the committee, and come to us and say, we're, we're concerned enough that we think you need to appeal? Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, councillor Thompson?
Yes, through you, to Mr. Hurlowich. I'm certainly pro-severance and I've had people come to me for years about severance, severances in the rural area, and they just don't happen, period. I'm wondering if we reconsidered this and changed the motion, would not the region automatically appeal or would the province not object to this outright because of its being contrary to their policies? And I tell you, if, if this severance was approved, we'll have, well, you, you probably have several calls a week about severances in the rural area anyway, because I know I've referred them to you.
Your Worship to this council, the problem is, is that an appeal can only be lodged within twenty days of giving notice of the decision of the committee of adjustment. This council therefore lodged its appeal. The region and province didn't lodge an appeal, knowing that the region, or the city already had one. If we withdraw it now, neither the region nor the province have the ability to file an appeal because the period in which to do that has passed.
Okay, in fact, Mr. Hurlowich, you may want to qualify, there's an issue right now with the ministry, I think, at this point with regard to the land use that we had passed, I think they're appealing that decision to the OMB, is that correct?
If that decision is for another part of, of Willoughby, these lands actually were approved, it was part of the same amendment one seventy before the, the region, and that's when they took away the rights to have non-farm residential lots here.
Thank you. Councillor Maves?
Yes, Mr. Hurlowich, I'm just looking at the diagram here and I'm seeing there is a, a house to the west already there. And, and, and are we providing garbage collection and fire services and whatnot at that property? So, we already are there then, so, so the comment about that would be redundant, I would think, would it not? In that, in that we already are providing fire services and, and garbage collection and whatnot there, so I don't know whether, whether that, that statement's valid or not, really.
Yes, councillor Carey?
Well, I, I'm of the same mind as councillor Thompson, I'm in favor of the severances. I don't think we should just sit back like sheep and accept the fact that the province says that this is good agricultural land. The farmers won't pay anyone that owns land out there enough to cover the city taxes. If, if there's a big parcel, never mind a small parcel, anyone from this area, anybody from Willoughby, they know it's not good agricultural land. It might be good agricultural land as defined by the province, but there's nothing grows out there. So, I'm going to support if we, if there's a motion made or make a motion.
Okay, we'll have to get to that point yet.
To turn it over.
Okay, are there questions yet for Mr. Hurlowich? Councillor Fisher?
Yes, I'm very familiar with this area of land and like everyone else has said, who farms anymore? And if you farm, you have to have well over two thousand acres at least to do any farming, and what are you going to farm to do what? Farming's gone. And I believe this property to be very, very in the proximity of the big, large development of Metris, which is hundreds and hundreds of homes. I don't see this to be a problem. This is a remnant piece of property and I don't have a problem with law, and the rules being changed here.
Councillor Fisher, do you have a question for?
Not a question, I'm making a comment.
Well, we, yes, but we're going to be debating this if we get to the motion to reconsider. Okay, I'll ask you to defer your comment till then. Okay, do we have a motion then to, for reconsideration? Moved by councillor Fisher, is there a seconder to it? Councillor Carey? Okay, any comments, councillor Wing?
Yes, there's an interdepartmental memo that says, "The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action or to take into account added information or a changed situation." Is it, were we hasty? No. Were we ill-advised? I don't think so. Were we, did we take an erroneous action? I don't think we did there either. Is there added information? No, we had it all before, as before. And has the situation changed? No, it hasn't. I don't think this meets any of the criteria for reconsideration. It's a, it says, "Council should contemplate a reconsideration based on the above principles, not because of pressure from proponents or parties affected." And that's exactly what's happening here. Pressure from proponents or parties affected, and there's no way I'm going to support this sort of thing. I mean, the, the fact still stands that this does not conform to local, regional, or provincial planning policies and could set an inappropriate precedent. We have to continue with this appeal simply because we stepped up to the plate and did it in November. And because we stepped up to the plate and did it, the region and the province didn't. You know, we don't want to set precedents like this where planning policies are just disregarded. You know, there's, there's no way I'm going to even contemplate supporting this motion.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Motion to reconsider, is that clear? All in favor? One, two, three, opposed? One, two, three, four. Motion is defeated. Thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. Thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. We'll move on to the next communication, the fresh air fund request that March 20th, 2009 be proclaimed as fresh air fund day in the city of Niagara Falls for the approval of council. Moved by Counsel Maves, seconded by... Is there a seconder? Is there a seconder to the motion? Members of council, Counsel Carrio is seconding the motion. So we have a motion before us to declare March 20th as fresh air fund day. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion is carried, thank you. We have requests that the month of March be proclaimed as Easter Seals Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. As well, we have a recommendation, a request, that Ontario Association of Social Workers request that the week of March 2nd to March 8th, 2009 be proclaimed as Social Work Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Diodati. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Are there any additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk? Thank you. Move on to reports. We have report 2000... TS 2009-16, a charter request regarding project share. Move approval by Counsel Ryanone, there's a seconder to that, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have a request as well for the presentation of new bus graphics. Moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Gren, do you wish to make a comment before we call the vote?
Your worship, Dave Stewart, our general manager of transit, is here just to give a brief overview of the report.
Well, we have... I think we've got approval...
Okay.
Motion to approve. Does anyone want to hear from Mr. Stewart? I know that he's been here all night. Do you want to... No? Well, we do. We do have a presentation. Mr. Stewart, why don't you give us a real quick presentation?
In the effort of expediency, I'll be very, very quick. Mayor Salcy, members of council, senior staff, members of the press and public, I'll be very quick. It's exciting times at Niagara Transit right now, and one of the things we're very excited to show you this evening is the fact that we're trying to further secure our relationship as a member of this Corporation City Niagara Falls's team. A lot of people still refer to us as the commission, and those days have gone. They've been gone for two years now. So in an effort to kind of further strengthen our ties and promote a real new progressive image and rebrand the system, this is a look that we worked with a graphic designer to create. You can see that incorporates the logo of the city of Niagara Falls. There's been a little bit of artistic license taking place here to fit on the side of a bus, but we think it's very attractive. We're looking at putting this graphic on all the new buses that we are purchasing. We have four that just arrived last week, real nice-looking buses. This is actually a photograph of one of those Eldorado 35-foot buses we received, and then we just had it photoshopped to put this graphic on there. So that's exactly what the graphic is going to look like. There's going to be a cost to doing this. It's roughly $6,000 for these initial four buses. As we move on to buy all the following buses, it will be incorporated the purchase price of the cost of the bus. The one thing you should be made aware of is that as we move forward, we would like to look at all the new bus purchases having this graphic, and then only advertising placed on the rear of the bus, so that there would not be full wraps and full-side advertising panels on the side of the buses to kind of create a more unique, professional, integrity-looking bus. This is a very unique community, where you've got just dozens and dozens of buses going down Lundys Lane, and we've got visitors to the community, wishing to take our Fall Shuttle service in the summer. We need to have kind of a uniforming to the fleet, and we'd like to have them notice these buses coming down the road. You've got the dark blue across the top and blue across the front cowl of the bus, and the graphics on the side, and it creates a nice, unique look that they can know that they're getting a city bus when they're taking the bus, when they get on Lundys Lane, go down to the park for the day, or bored when they're going back to Lundys Lane. So if there's any questions, I'll endeavor to answer them as best I can, and I'll be very quick.
Counsel Diodati?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. They look great. My one question is, I see with... I don't know, is that the Photoshop, or do we have the falls going backwards? I'm not sure. Are we going to turn it around? I'm just kind of curious to know. I noticed that in the drawings here, too. You know, the logo, the official logo goes this way. I just wondered if any consideration was given to that?
Through your worship, yes, consideration was given to that. One of the things that we noticed is that when you use this contravision when you're covering windows, a lot of times the seniors sit at the front of the bus, the students sit at the back of the bus. That's just historically what happens, and the seniors do not like to look through graphics. You can see through it, but it does get darker over the course of time because it's just pixels, and they get darker. And by putting it at the back of the bus, it was less obtrusive to the passengers. And we looked at graphics with it flowing the other way, and this actually, you know, in simple terms, just worked better.
Okay, answer the question?
I'll second the motion to put the falls the other way.
We do have... We have the bus in reverse on the page beyond the report with the falls traveling in the right direction. So, Mr. Stewart, which one is it?
Were you looking at the image on the other side of the bus?
We're looking at... Yes. Yes, on the other side, it's reversed, correct?
Well, because it's covering the rear windows as opposed to the front windows.
Turn around.
On the other side of the bus, that's correct. It's movable. Mr. Dillavich, would you like to make a comment? Mr. Dillavich, please go ahead.
I didn't want to take this too long. If you look in your reports, you will see on the one side of the bus that it's going the right way. Because you got the two sides of the bus, you got the one side is the right way, and to match it up on both sides, you have it going the... I guess you'd be sitting on... Standing on the American side looking at the falls. That's type. On the other side, you see the... From the Canadian side, so...
Okay. So, now, we do have one motion for Counsel Thompson. Do you want to withdraw your second motion or let us know?
What was that?
We have a motion... We have a motion to approve, first of all, and you made a motion.
No, I was just being smart.
Okay, all right, okay. So, members of council, you have the explanation explained to you. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Stewart. Appreciate it again. I'd like to call on the Chair of Community Services for ratification of community services, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of January 26, 2009 meeting be approved under reports MW 2009-03, Christmas holidays 2008, flooding complaints and staff response that staff, one, implement a public education program, two, add supplementary sewer cleaning in problem areas, three, complete SSET-TV inspections of the problem sewer areas, four, implement a trial chemical treatment in the problem areas, five, investigate the purchase of additional flushing equipment and the use of contractors, and that staff prepare a report to council under one, the sweeping tile disconnect program, and two, comprehensive sewer use bylaw. Under TS 2009-03, Nassau Avenue portable speed hump update, one, that the speed humps not be installed on Nassau Avenue, that the region of Niagara be requested to install an additional Trailblazer site on Lyons Creek Road to the Chippewa Willoughby Arena in advance of Nassau Avenue, that signs indicate local traffic only be installed on Nassau at Sawdome Road and Lyons Creek Road, and that a follow-up traffic review be carried out on Nassau in the fall of '09. Under CD 2009-03, fence bylaw variance appeal, that the decision of the chief building officer dated December 1st, '08 be upheld as per the compromise drawing, and under new business, that the city staff along with Niagara Falls tourism utilize the docks on ICE charity hockey tournament as an opportunity to showcase Niagara Falls over the... To the over 800 physicians from across Ontario who will be attending, and I so moved...
Moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. At this point, are there any items which council wishes to remove from the consent agenda, treat separately? Counsel Thompson?
I don't want anything removed. I just want to thank the report regarding the heating systems in the arena. It looks like there's a policy is basically when there are people there, there should be an attempt to try to at least put some heat in the area where the spectators are, and that's fine. The reason I bring it up is because when you're recognized as being a member of city council and the people are sitting around you freezing to death, the first thing they ask, "Well, what do you do with my tax money, and when does this heat kick in?" Well, at least we have a policy there, and hopefully they'll stick to that policy, and I... At least I know what the policy is. Thank you.
So somebody wants to move the consent agenda? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Any comments or discussion further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. And members of council, we have a resolution as well. Resolution that the appropriate staff person be authorized to submit a financial request to the Department of Canadian Heritage in relation to the Celebrate Canada program for organizing activities to celebrate Canada Day. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion's carried. I'm advised by the clerk procedurally that we're going to move into Corporate Services Committee. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
You're actually going to do Corporate Services Agenda as part of the council.
Okay, so we'll begin the Corporate Services Agenda, and we'll deal with bylaws at the end of Corporate Services and New Business at that point. So...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Then when do we do New Business? At the end of Corporate Services?
Yes, we're doing after bylaws and New Business, and the clerk's advising that I will be chairing this, is that correct? Okay. We'll begin with the minutes of February 9, 2009 meeting. At this point, motion to approve. It's advising given. By Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Any discussion or comments with regard to the minutes? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the general purposes budget, and we do have a presentation by Mr. Todd Harrison with regard to operating results, and a handout is to follow again. It just reported, I guess, as I'm advised by the clerk. We have a motion, a recommendation, I should say, then, to receive the report for information purposes, and direct staff to utilize the appropriate reserves to reduce the operating deficiency for the year. Move. Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Once again, any comments or questions? Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I know that in the recommendation, it says to a direct staff to utilize the appropriate reserves. I did have a discussion with staff, and I'm just wondering if they could basically update council on which reserves the money will be coming out of.
Okay. And who would like to answer the question? Mr. Harrison?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through Counsel. We have a number of reserves, and the report outlines, there was a few specific reasons for the operating deficiency that we had, and they were... The reserves that we were utilizing would be the special purposes reserves for the areas that are identified, particularly... And one example is, in the area of WSID, we had a significant payout in regards to the prescriptive legislation. We have reserves set aside that would be offsetting that item. In other areas, we had... We went over budget this year on our winter maintenance control. We would be utilizing the special purposes reserve that is intended for that type of purposes. These would be the items that we would bring back to our... That's we would be utilizing.
Thank you. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, and your worship, that's much appreciated. I just wanted council to be aware that it wasn't going to come out of some other reserves, like the money that we have for the sale of lands over at Montrose and MacLeod, as opposed to reserves that are very specific.
Great, appreciate the clarification. Any other questions or comments before we call the vote? Counsel Wing?
Yeah, I'm just sort of concerned of the general state of things here. Our revenues last year were up just under 3.3 million more than we expected, yet we still ran a $607,000 operating deficit. I mean, what concerns me is that some of the things that increased our revenues were like land sales and one-time payment and lieu increase, so we can't expect to be relying on those every year, yet some of the things that dragged us down are related to the economy that we ended up getting into in the latter months of last year, and we can expect those to continue. So I'm just looking, you know, at about a $4 million difference here, and it's just really worrisome that we could be facing this sort of thing again this coming... Now, this time next year, and we're already drawing down our reserves to cover it, and I'm just getting even more concerned about the state of our finances than I was previously.
Mr. Harrison, do you wish to address that? Or Mr. Burton? No? Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments before we call the vote? Counsel? Before we call the vote, any other comments? Having seen none, and all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. We'll move on. We have a discussion with regard to general purposes budget. At this point, we're going to ask Mr. Dillavich to make his presentation from the podium, please.
Thank you, your worship. Just, you know, a recap of our journey as we're continuing on, and I'll try to prioritize our budgets and close the gap based on the council's direction. And first, we've done our first budget, we've covered the $1.8 million gap, and we're going to have staff go back and look at priorities and look at areas where we can make reductions to reduction in expenditure. As you can see on September 15th, a combination of reduction in expenditures using the $3.9 million dollars from the province, we shaved some $5.2 million. Back on February 9th, we came close to about $200,000, additional $2 million dollars in reduction, which resulted in this shortfall of the $1.56 million that you're dealing with tonight. As you're aware, last week, Friday, another package was sent up for consideration with cuts amounting to almost $600,000. So just want to talk quickly about some of those cuts that we are proposing. We talked about fleet replacements there, shaving that $1,123,000 by $123,000. What the staff concentrate on is our frontline equipment, and we're replacing that, and those will be things like additional plows, any of the pieces of equipment that provide for us service to the public, where we will be cutting back by not having that $123,000. It will be things like cars, trucks, just more or less support vehicles. On the engineering side, it was a simple one that has been inadvertently included in the operating budget as we transfer over to the utility budget. We talked about some staffing issues, prorating, where we've done some gapping on some positions, some temporary help, we're not going to do anything on the list, we're simply not going to bring that on. Another large item is facilities transferred reserves, we're cutting out $350,000, $250,000. As you already called, our last, the council would support staff moving forward, looking at the lot of... The large inventory building that you own, and look at cost for disposing of it, either for sale or giving it to various groups. I think it occurred from the fire, all favored tonight, or by great landlord, who then, I think, just in the last couple of years, spent $80,000 or $90,000 replacing the roof on that building. Again, we provided facilities at no cost to them. So those are some of the... So if we do dispose of a number of buildings, we see that we won't need that much money in the facilities area of planning. We're not going to fill a contract position, we're going to do that with staff, internal staff, try to get through. Other government, that's $5,000. That's a book of $15,000, $10,000. That's a little discretionary pot that the council used, and I think used some of that tonight by waiving some fees until it's shared. It comes out of that pot of money. Accounting and reporting, I think $5,000 really relates to expenditure, and that's bank charges, fire training. That's hopefully a historical expenditures, again, over the last several years, they have a beautiful lot, we've done a little trimming in that area, the next slide. Again, I think I'm going to say, a number of these were, again, some training with that last four or five years expenditures, again, we looked at parking lot expenditures. We looked at it in totality, just trying to shave a little bit of money off that total expenditure there. Transfers to reserves, this one here, we won't do a transfer to the reserve this year. Back to them in the future, trying to do some improvements for our parks. Cemetery fees and increase in revenue that council approved at its last meeting. Other recreational spittle transfers. All we did there, along with Niagara Falls tourism and other cultural services, those are a number of grants we did for external crews. All we did was a 10% reduction there and it was more or less an across-the-board reduction come up to $10. If you look at any type of budget, we talked about it. One of the things they say you shouldn't do is do these across-the-board reductions. Like all you ended up doing is a lot of it. We're already, you know, staff have been talking about that. And after we finish with this year's budget discussion, we'll be coming back to counsel. Earlier than normal, to talk about those 2010 budgets, start looking at some priorities. Where do we want to go? What's important to this council? And look at all these different groups that we support and say, should we still be in that business? Should we still be supporting those groups? Rather than just, you know, cutting everybody, maybe it's certain activities we no longer support and say, no, these are, these are the things that will be more important to the community and this is where we should spend $1,000 instead of doing this across-the-board cuts. So a few other staffing, again, parks and rack, they have a clerk that's moving on to another municipality and decided we don't need that, fill that position and give it the $160,000 in the recreation facilities. Again, we're looking at some of the smaller expenditures. So there's a number of, and that totals a $590,000 expenditure. So a number of them are fairly easy to do in that we're just pinning up on some of our expenditures. Some of them aren't, you won't see again next year, just, you know, the gapping. But we are starting to get into, as we call, some infrastructure issues, looking at parking lots, not doing that transfer fleet and our facilities. So this is where we're at. I think we've arrived at this number and gave one of the next slides. So if you take into account, if council were to approve all the reductions we are proposing tonight, our shortfall will now be at $970,000. And I think at this point, as staff came to that, I think, you know, we're starting to get to a point where I think all the low-hand improvement is gone. Now, the next thing is we're starting to get into some tough decisions that have to be made. So then we go on to the next slide there. So, you know, where do we want to go with this? Is council still interested in pursuing a 0% tax increase? And in order to do that, you know, you'd have to look at further reduction expenses for use of reserves. Or the two options that we talked about here is passing, even though council has set up until now, they want zero. The question is, at what cost are we prepared to get that zero? Game option one. I think if we didn't any further reductions, we're talking about now impacts on service or infrastructure replacements. That's the point we're at right now. I know right now, we talked about reducing staffing levels. I think there will be a report coming forward either March 9th or March 23rd about how we would reduce staffing levels to attrition. Because council is very clear that we didn't want to see layoffs and attrition. But I have, I'm sitting with a couple of requisitions right now to replace permanent vacancies. We're using, we're filling those vacancies in right now with casual seasonal staff. One of the positions is a snowplow operator for sidewalks. If we didn't have that position filled, we'd have one less sidewalk pile out there, so it would take a lot longer to get those sidewalks plowed. This is where we're starting to go now. We're at that point where if council wants to get down to that zero and wants to find another $970,000 cuts, those are the things that we're going to have to start looking at. On the infrastructure replacements, one possibility is maybe we don't construct new infrastructure. In our sidewalk replacements budget, we have about $116,000 for new sidewalks. Just recently, council approved a report to look at our 2009 program. If we didn't go ahead with that program, there would be a number of new sidewalks that we wouldn't construct, such as Stanley Avenue from Morrison to Bridge Street, St. Paul Avenue, Church of Lane to North Church. Those are some of the things that if we cut that, we wouldn't do. Another thing to think about, again, on the new infrastructure is trails. For 2009, proposing a number of trails that was approved in 2008 capital program, if we don't go ahead with that, such as Gardner Trail, Hendershot Trail, improvements in Decatur Park, we talked about a new boat ramp. Do we want to build this new infrastructure? Some things to consider there. So if you looked at the new sidewalks, $116,000, maybe $150,000, $200,000 on new trails and some other improvements, this council still want to go ahead with that. So there's some potential for cuts there. Those are the things we're talking about right now. If you were to approve that, then we're down to about $670,000. Then you have to start getting into the real meat of our infrastructure program. And the last, the last, you know, the real big dollars are on the public work side, that being storm surges and roads. There's a few million dollars available there that you may wish, you may wait to cut. Next, talk about tax rate increase. 1% rate increase will generate $465,000. Once again, if we implemented, council implemented the cuts that we proposed by staff at this time, we would have to raise taxes by about 2.1% to cover off that $970,000. That's where we're at right now. So we're also providing here a list of what's been going on in other municipalities, just recently for Erie, 5.9% they're looking at for 2009. And it's interesting, I think last year in 2008, 10 or 11% increase that they passed and then they're coming forward to 5.9% increase. So you can see what's going on through Ontario and in the region here, what some of the targets are, what some of the goals are. What's interesting in Markham, where they did vote 0%, they slashed services and they laid off staff. That's how they got to 0%. So just proof for thought, I know while they're having some real difficulties that, you know, you talk about it for the community, that's trouble. They got John here shutting down. They're targeting 2% increase there if they apply. And then option number three, and I know we talked about that, is one-time use of reserves. It's not something that staff, it's something we can't support. Reserves are there to take care of emergencies or one-time expenditures. Don't believe reserves should be used to augment your operating budget because you need those monies in case things come up. We talked about the WSID, the prescriptive legislation there. We had a $350,000, $400,000 award there that we did have a month that we had to come up with money to make that work. Winter maintenance, we were over last year. The way this winter's gone this year, it weren't likely to be over in the next year. We'll have to deal with that in the fall. If not, we will have to deal with that again this night, next year. We talked about the expenditure there, which is some reserve to cover off those expenditures. So anyways, this is where we're at. And as we look at it, and some of the things that staff are at the point now, the council is, wants to go to that zero, there has some real tough decision, you know, what else they want to cut. If they're satisfied with where we've done to date, you know, with that 2.1% increase, don't leave the reserves and the staff can't recommend the use of reserves for operating expenditures. And I think, but, you know, for council, you know, some council should consider seriously, it is a tax level increase. I know that it has been zero, has been the target. This also sets the stage for 2010 and 2011. We don't have, don't raise the dollars now. It puts us further behind when we look at 2010 and 2011 because we haven't been raising those revenues over the years and try to deal with those kinds of target implications. So to that, fair to answer any questions? Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read a very interesting article in the Toronto Star last week and it was in regards to a council, a council arguing with the mayor's premise that they're only raising taxes 4%. And the council said, well, it's not really 4%. When you look at, we're increasing our park fees, we're increasing our arena fees. This council's doing that. We're increasing arena fees, we're increasing park fees. We have, you call it a fee, you know, not a tax increase, a fee, people would argue semantics, but we're also going to see the water and sewer rates come to us with an increase also. So when they factored that into the big picture in Toronto, the reality is, we may be striving for a 0% tax levy increase, but the increases are going to hit the residents other places. And I've been surprised because I've had a number of residents say to me, what's your big deal with sticking to 0%? And I said, well, because the increases are coming in other areas as opposed to this area. And I understand we're going to be looking at a proposed increase to the water sewer rates. So we're not really at zero. You said something that stuck out in my mind. You talked about parks, parks and recreational cuts and trails. I would normally look at that, but I would say in a year that we have a new convent, a new community center and we're building a new four-pad arena and we have a new splash pad at that said community center, we have a lot of recreational facilities available for taxpayers. When you talk about parks and trails, that's a, that's a want in a recessional time. Tell me what we could cut there. When you talked about, that took us down, I think, $300,000. Which ones were you talking about again?
What I mentioned was just trails in general and what was approved in the 2008 capital budget. I'm not even talking about parks or anything like that. But, you know, what we talked about from a staff perspective, just new infrastructure. Here we are building more infrastructure and we're trying to maintain what we have. So here's something about adding trails. And I talked about the Hendershot Trail and the Garner Trail, some improvements to Decatur Park, like the new boat ramp, some trails in there. And easily, there's a couple $100,000 in expenditures there that, that new trails and improvements to bolster your facilities.
Counselor Iannone, to that point?
To that point, I hate the comment, I don't want to pick on...
Yeah.
We, we've asked you to pick on because we're picking on you. So, I mean, we're hardly sparing anybody in this process. I guess my point here would be, Hendershot Trail, and I hate saying that because, you know, it's to honor Gary and maybe just defer it to a time. But those aren't, to me, those are not infrastructure projects. To me, infrastructure projects are water, sewer. When you bring to where our difficult decisions will be and it gets to capital investment, those to me are the make-work projects. So Henry, can maybe through you, Mr. Chair, to Denise, can you please give me the cost of Hendershot Trail, Bucater Trail, and what was the other one you mentioned?
The other one...
And the...
Program. And, you know, it's all there's to mention, look at those numbers. I just look at the generalities there, but potentially there's about a couple $100,000 in capital contribution that will go to those projects. And I think what we're trying to get a sense from, staff's trying to get a sense from council because, you know, one of the next steps, we talked about during our capital program. And we need to know what dollars will be available from the operating budget, which will then kind of dictate what will be available to, in order to carry out the capital program. The council says, and I think this is a priority exercise, you know, we're trying to say, you know, what are your priorities here? And you're saying, okay, we're going to give less money towards trail development, which means that the program will be elongated. It's not that it never happens, it's just going to take longer to get that trail done. Those areas, trails, instead of trying to do a couple year, maybe we're only going to do one trail a year.
Well, you know, I remember Gary Hendershot, the first year I was on council, standing here through a budget discussion and saying, look, just do what you got to do to get it done and do what you got to do to get us to make this budget successful. So if that will help make this budget successful, then I, I'd like to make a motion that staff bring back a report showing us the exact dollars in cuts for, for those types of projects that are not necessary, maybe wanted, but not nec... And if you could give us the numbers now, we don't have to defer you to bring us back to a report.
Well, Counselor, I can just maybe add to it, if I may, just for some information and you can decide what you'd like to do. Earlier, I talked to Mr. Dulevik and he gave me the information that trails and sidewalks would be approximately $300,000. If you take them in bulk and subtract that from the 970, we're down to 670 roughly as a balance. Maybe Mr. Dulevik can speak to it. That would represent roughly a 1.6% increase, if that helps. But Mr. Dulevik, the figure you gave me of 300,000 did include new infrastructure, which was new sidewalks as well.
Yeah, it was new sidewalks and it was on those trails. And I'm just trying to do a ballpark figure there because there's almost $400,000 in the Parks and Rec capital program. I just looked at some of the, that they were looking to do in 2008. But I mean, if we come up with that $300,000, the next question is, where do you want to go to 670? If the goal is still zero, I think that the large dollars available now are your infrastructure program.
Counselor?
And that'll be in the public works area.
Does that help, Counselor?
Well, we're crossing into capital programs now.
Yes.
Okay. So then, we kind of had a conversation out back and I congratulate the museum on getting their funding, but the municipal, that kind of opened a door for us to be able to lower our commitment to what we've already committed ourselves to. The municipality's requirement is $3.2 million. The council voted to continue with that process, but the museum board came to us and, or their foundation or whatever it is they want to call it, they came to us committing to raise $2 million. So if the premise is only we have to put $3.2 million forward, then this council can make the decision to lower our commitment to 1.2 and still keep the intent this council did by saying, we support you. So, and, and my understanding is that's in the capital budget.
Counselor, I'm not sure if that's correct, but Mr. Dulevik, do you understand that as the...
Yeah, and I think the way to do it is, you've got to marry the two. The capital budget, where it gets its funding from is from the operating budget and utility budget. They, that's where the bulk of the funding comes from and the venture finance.
Okay.
But just to qualify the answer for Counsel Iannone, you're founding?
The two are, two are married together. Now, if you want to get to the museums, there's nothing in the 2009 budget right now on the operating budget to contribute towards the museum. I think we're going to be, that will be the future and we're looking at other funding sources.
For capital funding?
Maybe later, next year.
In the capital budget, it could be the venture finance. Or if council says, no, we're not going to venture finance, then we're going to have to look to our operating calendar. What will you cut? What will you do without an operating frequency? Say, no, we're not going to venture, we're going to do it from our operating fund. That means it will come from some type of program that we're doing right now.
Actually, Mr. Dulevik, I guess what I'm asking you is, can we marry the best of both worlds in that where we can, council continues its commitment to the funding, but it doesn't have to be at the 2 million mark, we can reduce it to the 1.2. And I know that we can because I called Mr. Burton today and said, is that a possibility for us? That doesn't take our commitment away. We meet what we need to do, but it saves the taxpayers $800,000.
Just in response to that, I was advised that, first of all, that money may not be required till after December of this year, so it would fall into next year's budget?
Into, oh, into '10?
Into '10?
Yeah, there's something I do want to clarify in the whole legacy project. The money they got was for the museum itself. There are still other components to that legacy project that council approved when they, when they looked at that. So it wasn't just the museum. When, when the museum board made the application for the museum project, we wanted to, we asked about making an application for the entire legacy project, which included a gateway feature and some other amenities as part of the total project. And what the federal government and the province said, no, you could only pick one component out of that entire program. So they picked the museum project because it was the most, it was $9.6 million, which they picked the most expensive they could make the application for.
But I think if the province... But I think if the province and the feds are looking at a scaled-down version, we can meet our commitment and look at a scaled-down commitment also and still meet the intent.
Yeah, I understand council would approve about $2 million, but I think they're looking at the entire legacy project itself. Now, if council is interested in saying, well, the museum is bigger than what we're going to pass, it's a different...
Okay. Thank you.
So, so Counselor, does that, do you understand that? Like, does that, so it could be, we committed up to two, but it could be, and they're asked to raise two as well? And, and so that, that could be changed, but then at the same time, that amount of money may not be required till later next year possibly, but it's certainly worth considering now? Okay? I have Counselor Iannone and was it Counselor Carrio? I'm sorry, Counselor Wing? Any Counselor Carrio?
It's funny, you're not the only one mixes this up. I'm not sure if Counselor Iannone made a motion or not earlier, but I think she might have. But I was, I was thinking along the same lines. I think in a time like this, rather than building more new infrastructure, we need to be focusing on maintaining the infrastructure we already have. We have some pretty big recreational infrastructure projects on the go. We still have to pay for the McBain Center. We've got the four-pad arena underway. Meanwhile, we have roads and sewers that are falling apart and need to be looked after. So rather than putting money into trails, which is new infrastructure, which will also have to be maintained, I would rather cut back on those and instead preserve the money to look after the existing infrastructure and reduce the amount of the tax increase by just that much more. Yes, I'll make the motion that...
Excuse me, if I could just, if you wouldn't mind, I was going, I did cut off Counselor Iannone because I was trying to qualify some of the comments. She was just, just to clarify, but you did have a motion, if you wouldn't mind, Counselor Iannone?
I'd like to move that we, I'd like to make a motion that we remove Hendershot Trail, Bucater Trail and the Chippewa Boat Ramp out of the, out of our operational budget, which I said, think you said would reduce us down to what?
Well, that there, I'm looking at $150,000, also talked about on $160,000, should we do sidewalk, I'm talking about...
Yeah, to me, that's, that's needed infrastructure. That's, that's, to me, that's not, those aren't perks. A sidewalk is not a perk. So I'd like to...
Did you want to defer those, did you say those projects, move them out of this budget, defer it to next year or they're beyond?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to take them out of this budget and if you want, if it's semantics to say defer it to next year, we're not going to be in a better financial situation next year. We already know that. So right now, I'd like to have those removed out of the, out of the 2009 budget to be deferred to a budget where we can afford it.
Okay, we have a second to that motion and Counselor Wing. Now, Counselor Wing, I did, is that what, is that going to be the intent of your motion as well?
Yes, it was. And I had some other things I wanted to speak on, but I'll wait till this is...
All right. So we'll have a discussion with regard to the motion that's on the floor, members of council. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Dulevik referred to the Garner Trail as well, which I didn't hear from you, but I'm assuming that's part of it.
That is part of it also. That is part of it also, so there's, there's four items: Hendershot Trail, Buchanan Trail, the Boat Ramp, and the Garner Trail.
Uh, just for clarification, we're looking at, you know, trying to get over two hundred thousand dollars in production. Is that the goal, or is simply all these projects? They, they may be a bit more.
I'm hoping they're a bit more.
Yeah.
It just takes us down.
Okay, any discussion now with regard to the motion? Yes, councillor Kerrio?
Yes, your worship, it's a good, it's a good place to start, but I think that the council should look at all of the capital projects that affect this year's operating budget. I think that those are some that Mr. Dulevik happened to mention, but I think that we should have a look at all of the capital projects that affect this year's operating budget. So whether there's a list of them, or however you want to do them, there may be some things that this council, you know, we won't want to stop, uh, any separation of sewers, or we won't want to stop repairs to water mains, but maybe there's an asphalt overlay that could wait a year, um, something, maybe there's something else. There might be something, I think that this council should at least have the opportunity to look at the capital projects that affect this year's operating. There may be others in recreation, there might be. I just think we should look at them all.
And for council's-
I will support your motion as well.
Sure, for council's information, uh-
Yeah, through your worship, I mean, up until now, the message has been to staff not to look at the capital program, so we haven't looked at that side of the operating budget. Um, so, you know, if, if the direction from, from council is now, well, we're prepared to look at the capital portion of our operating budget, uh, then staff can go back and have a look at it. But we, we have to remember, we can only go down so low, because we, we want to use the three point nine million, uh, from the province, so we can't go below that, because you've got to match your expenditures to that, so you have to look at anything above that. Will that, will that, that deal with the nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and what does that mean? Uh, so the areas that you are going to, to tackle are, are Parks and Rec, uh, Public Works, uh, where you're talking about a million dollars in storm sewers, um, uh, five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in totality. A number may be wrong. On sidewalks, that's for new and replacing existing sidewalks, uh, and road expenditures. Those are, those are, those are where the big dollars are, and that's, that's what you're going to be targeting when you, when you look at that, uh, that type of, uh, capital money. Uh, tho- those are the areas that you're going to hit, and if we do cut that, that has an impact on what your capital program will be like. Um, because that directly translates into, uh, the funding that you'll have available. So if that, those dollars aren't there, we will then have to reshuffle the deck on what projects are going to go forward. Uh, and the same thing on the utility budget side, you know, we'll have to look at what, uh, what will be available there, because, you know, there's some pressures there, and, and that may increase, and council may say, no, you know, we can't afford that increase. Again, a big portion of that budget is on the capital side, so if we trim that back, that trims the availability of funding for the capital program. And I think earlier council's, you know, one of the things that council talked about was not issuing more debt, so, so it's, we start squeezing our program as to what we can do. And, uh, we have to prioritize then what are the important capital programs that we have to do? As you say, it may not be an overlay program, uh, we have the Chippewa, uh, the, the Weyman Bridge to do in Chippewa. Uh, that's a couple of million dollar expenditure there. If that's a priority and we don't want a debt finance, you could see a real, you know, that could be, funding could be stretched out over a couple of years, but that means we don't do a lot of other roadwork programs in order to accommodate that. So if that's the direction that council wishes to go, and then there's going to be some, uh, significant work on staff's part to try to figure out what does this mean, what does it mean to the capital program? Um, you, you'd have to look at the two hand, hand in hand to say, you cut that funding, this is what happens to the capital program.
And councillor Kerrio, further that point?
Further to that, your worship, I'm not suggesting that we cut it completely, but there may be some things that we might defer for this season. There may not, but I think that we need to look at it. We've looked at everything else, and I think if you're telling us that we're getting to the, to the point that there's nothing else to look at, we at least deserve, uh, to give ourselves a chance to look at that as well. We may not make any changes to it, but we should look at it.
I, I, I think the other options that you have available are, I think, services we talked about, you know, we talked about the two, the capital program or cuts to services. And, uh, um, and, you know, the only way you're going to cut services, because we've said no layoffs, is going to be uh, through attrition and, and say, hey, do we accept that sidewalk, snowplowing may take longer? You know, is council prepared to deal with the phone calls that come in, why is this taking so long? Well, it's because we, we've reduced our staffing levels to achieve a zero percent. Uh, and that's what we're looking from this council. If you're not interested in the tax increase, then we have to be prepared to go in the other direction, which is, uh, reduction in infrastructure spending and, and possibly even reduction in services.
Okay, I have councillor Ayenoni, councillor Thompson, and councillor Maves.
Thank you. Well, I think councillor Kerrio, that's the intent we want to go. When we watch both governments, the American and the Canadian, talk about their stimulus bills, it's to create infrastructure projects that are make-work projects, that keep the paving companies and keep the construction companies and the development companies and our own guys in work. So that's why I'm a little nearer in getting deeper into the capital budget right now. And when we make those cuts and we're not hiring a Niagara Falls paving company or people in Niagara Falls who work for a paving company, um, we're not putting them to work. Hence, I, I think that, that the, the infrastructure projects and our capital, deep capital projects are ones we really can't look at.
Councillor, I just want to remind you, I appreciate your comment, but we do have a motion on the floor that you introduced with regard to specific cuts and not the capital budget, so-
No, I understand.
So, so we should really try to address that? Okay, so let's, let's try. We do have councillor Thompson and councillor Maves to the motion, hopefully.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Dulevik. So how, how does this, I've been watching other councils around the region, and I see that, uh, they have programs set up to take advantage of the, uh, government, uh, um, programs for infrastructure. Uh, what are we doing with that? Uh, how does this discussion, uh, affect, uh, and, and, and what kind of a, uh, report are we going to receive with respect to where we're going with, uh, a lot of these opportunities with, uh, government funding, a third, a third, a third?
Your worship, uh, you know, what we would try to do is leverage the dollars that we do have in our budget, uh, and, uh, take advantage of any program that may come out. I, I, there is talk of a second intake sooner on the, on the Build Canada program. Uh, we believe under this similar vein, uh, similar rules that they have right now, uh, we can only wait for when that comes out, and then again, we would try to look at, uh, look at what we already have in our, our budget and try to leverage, yeah, we've, we've got some dollars available, we can, we can grab, uh, two thirds dollars from the upper levels of government, and that would then free up money to do some other work for us. So that, that's what we would try to do, is use existing dollars that we have. Or if it, or if it's all tied up, do we look at, uh, you know, some of our reserve accounts? But that's something we'll have to deal with when these programs come out, so.
So what have you received so far, uh, as far as, uh, uh, these infrastructure programs?
Well, we applied for the museum, and that's what we got. That was, uh, uh, all those announcements that were held under the Build Canada was what was applied for back in November, and what, what the federal and provincial governments did was they, uh, announced even more dollars, more projects than what they were going to first announce. They upped the ante, they say, so they approved a lot more projects than they were going to in the first round. So that, that's all they did. They just threw some more dollars in that and approved a lot more projects, so.
So our, our infrastructure was strictly the museum, that's what-
That's right. All we could do at the time was apply for one project. Uh, we provided the council at the time a list of projects to consider, and, uh, the museum project was what was, uh, uh, this council chose as what we did an application for.
Really, as far as, uh, super water, whatever, roads, uh, bridges, we didn't, uh, there, there was nothing else available for us?
We didn't apply, uh, for that Build Canada. Uh, they did have components for roads, they had components, uh, in there for bridges, that was one of the things you could have applied for. That was all spelled out, and, and council decided to go with the museum, uh, project. Uh, I know other municipalities, and when I look at the list of what they got, I mean, there was community centers, there were bridges, there were roadworks and things like that, that these, these communities, uh, applied for and got funding for. It was a, it was a choice, but they all got, you know, one shot at it, and, and it was what they applied for.
Okay. Anyway, I, I, I think we're going around in circles here. Uh, I, I like the motion, uh, with respect to the trails, that's, uh, neat and easy. I don't agree with the, uh, uh, with the sidewalks being, uh, cut out, because that's all we hear from, uh, people, wins my sidewalk, and some people have been waiting four or five years and longer for, uh, sidewalks, so I think that's, uh, an infrastructure that we can't ignore, and people expect us to be moving ahead with that. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll vote against the, uh, one motion, uh, with respect to the, uh, Hendershot Trail, just because of my friend Gary Hendershot as a symbolic issue, but, uh-
Need to cut it.
Huh?
Need to cut it.
Yeah. Anyway, um, the, uh, can we, can we not have a report, uh, with, uh, you're the expert on this, you know the expenditures. Uh, we're sitting around here digging for things that, uh, we're not aware, and come back with a report that is going to lay out very quickly, quick, uh, very clearly what your priorities are with respect to, uh, any cutting. You know what you need to have, you know what is absolutely essential, uh, in, uh, the capital budget and the operating budget, and, uh, come in with something that, uh, council can look at, then we have to make a decision on whether it's, uh, using reserve funds or, uh, increases, or, uh, what else we can cut?
To your worship, we went through that exercise. We, we did provide a, a, a priority document to this council. Uh, um, with it, I think a lot of those areas, uh, we've tackled, where we've done cutting. Uh, you know, we're, we're, even in, in tonight, we're suggesting a lot of groups in there. I don't know if someone's looked at the details, but there's a lot of groups that, you know, ten percent aboard, uh, across the board cut, uh, for a lot of these groups. I mean, um, you know, if you want further cuts, you know, who, who do you want to direct it to? Do you want to direct it to these, to these outside groups? Do you want, uh, I think that's where we're at. I mean, we're, 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 we as staff are facing some difficult choices here, because, we may come back with some recommendations, and then, you know, six months down the road, what do you mean we cut that? You know, you get the public out there complaining, well, why'd you cut that service? Uh, and, you know, and, and, well, staff recommended it. I think, you know, this is the difficulty we're at right now. If you're looking for some, some, some cuts, uh, I think, you know, there, there's some real difficult choices here to make. And, 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 and we're looking to council now for some direction. I think, as I said, we, we, we've taken care of a lot of the low-hanging fruit. Uh, we've started cutting into some of our capital, uh, funding, uh, areas. Um, but I think, you know, you want to get down to that zero, you got to start making some tough, tough decisions here. And, you know, you're having a hard time with, with the infrastructure. You don't want to cut on, on some of the, uh, other, uh, programs, because if we start cutting in the infrastructure, I don't think you're going to like to see what happens to our capital program. You'll see certain projects being delayed. Uh, it could affect Main and Ferry, it could affect, you know, I don't know until we see, you know, what, what we end up cutting, what, what our program is going to look like. So, uh, you know, this is where we're at, and I think, you know, uh, you know, council needs to, to say, okay, you know, we are prepared to go with these type of sacrifices if we're going to achieve that zero.
I have councillor Maves and councillor Kerrio.
Yeah, I think, uh, councillor, where Alderman Gary Hendershot would approve of us cutting that or holding it back for a while, further proof that the spirit does live on. Uh, the other thing is, you mentioned, uh, new sidewalks. And are these new sidewalks in new streets? Are they on old streets where they've never had a sidewalk for a number of years? Like, I think you mentioned Church's Lane, and you mentioned, uh, Stanley Avenue. Uh, now, I know that they haven't had sidewalks on those streets for years. Could that be held off for one more year?
These are all areas that haven't had sidewalks for years. Waters, uh, they, Stanley Avenue, the horse and the bridge, uh, they just haven't had sidewalks there for years.
So if they went another year without a sidewalk, we could save one hundred and sixteen thousand?
That's what we have planned for new sidewalks.
And those are on old streets that Denver had them before, so I don't think we're really, uh, accomplishing a lot by putting new sidewalks in there. I understand that, uh, you know, they haven't had them for years, I don't think they, that, is there a real, real desperate need for these sidewalks?
I, I know some issues have come up, that's why they've made the list, uh, as we get, uh, concerns raised by residents. Uh, over the past few years, we've, we've added them to a list of where new sidewalks, where I know we've had, uh, Stanley Avenue, for example, that has come up, like this council, to look at, it's not a new sidewalk there.
I remember that, and I, I agree with that. There hasn't been a sidewalk there for years, and I think possibly for the, for the event that that was meant for, we can possibly put some barriers up again this summer and possibly save that. Uh, and I'm just looking at some of the other issues. And I'm just saying, if, if it's really that important, sure, I'm all for the sidewalks, but if we can save some money, if they can hold off for a year, let's save the one hundred and sixteen thousand.
Already, I have councillor Kerrio, councillor Deodati, councillor Thompson.
Some of the motion, your worship, so if you'd like to weigh, uh, how much, much you feel the motion.
If you don't, if you don't mind, councillor Deodati, councillor Thompson, for the motion.
Well, I, I just had a comment, that, that we're, that we're cutting these out of the budget, and somebody's suggesting, well, we'll do it next year. Uh, it would be five years before we get around, maybe longer, because, uh, we got to challenge this year, uh, next year eleven million, and, uh, two thousand, two thousand and eleven, sixteen million dollar shortfall. So, uh, it won't be coming in a hurry.
I should just advise council that we've made an inquiry to the federal government with respect to the, um, building of our Four Pad Arena, it's a thirty-four million dollar project, and even though it's under construction, we're asking whether it's a possibility, it may be considered, uh, for the next round. We understand there's a next, another round, as, as Mr. Dulevik had suggested. So we don't know if they'll allow it, because we started it, but they are allowing, as you know, arenas to be included in other municipalities, but, uh, we are just at the process, the process of putting the walls up, so we're waiting. I did bring that, uh, to the attention of the federal members' office the other day, and, uh, so we're making that inquiry as we speak. Also, just for the benefit, uh, and we'll get on to this, but we, uh, we did transfer, I believe, last year, Mr. Dulevik, you clarified this from, uh, two capital last year with six point four million, is that correct?
Yes, that's the totality, and that, that, that would be considered those people, so, uh, you know, we put some already in that consideration for us, that five ninety-two, uh, we are carrying that up, so that's a important one.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, I think we've had good discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's approved, thank you. Now, I'm, I'm devised as well that we have to deal with the suggested cost earlier of five hundred and ninety-two thousand. It would have taken us to, uh, the shortfall of nine seventy. Moved by councillor Ayenoni, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to that further? Having said none, all of them in favor, motion's carried. So we can move on? Yes, councillor Kerrio?
I'd like to move that, that the staff comes back with a report, um, that discusses the capital that affects this year's operating. Um, I think we need to look at it. This is the fact that Mr. Dulevik says, I don't know what effect it has, makes me want to at least have a look, have, have this council have a look at it. So, you said you didn't know exactly what, it, how it would affect some projects, or you'd have to look into it. Well, if you do that, then I want to see it too. I want to look into it, and I think this council should have the opportunity to look at it. The other thing is, is I think that you deserve to know where we're coming from, whether we're not going to be satisfied till we get to zero, or whether we're looking to, you know, individually to, for one percent, one and a half, what, what do you have to get to? From my perspective, I've only heard from people who are having trouble paying their taxes. They don't want to pay an increase. I'm committed to try and get to zero. So if I have to look at some things in the capital that, um, like I said, that don't affect people's basements flooding, and that don't affect the water main replacement that needs to be done, but it might affect something else, I think we have to look at it. We at least owe it to ourselves to look at it. Now, maybe some of the other councillors are, are okay with a one and a half or a two. I would like to hear from, from them as well, and, uh, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, councillor, I agree, I understand what you're saying. We may want to hear from the rest of the council. I think at this point, members of council, if you do the math, we're about six hundred and seventy thousand, and I think it's about 1.6%, is that correct? 1.4?
Uh, sorry, your worship, just some clarification. The, um, the only thing that the motion passed was on the Parks and Rec projects. There was nothing, I believe, on the sidewalks, so, so that one sixteen is still in, so we're not at the six seventy yet.
Okay, we're not, you're correct, we're not at six seventy yet, so the sidewalks are still in?
Uh, yeah, at the moment, they're, they're still in.
Okay.
We were just looking at, uh, Parks and, uh, Parks and Rec projects.
Okay, councillor Wing and councillor Fisher.
I, I think I'd like a report back from staff on what sidewalk projects we can let go. Uh, you know, as I said earlier, I don't want to move away from maintaining the infrastructure we already have. What I am prepared to cut is building new infrastructure right now.
Well, I'll look at it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I want to look-
I'll make all reports, we'll look at it.
Yeah, that's what I want to look at. Other things that I had, uh, you know, I read, I know a lot of the stuff that we got in our handouts tonight was emailed to us on the weekend, and I, I, I read through it. Something else that jumped out at me was, there was, um, some stuff on, uh, veh- maintaining our vehicles and the vehicle replacement program. Could we also get a report back on, uh, the city vehicles, not the municipal work trucks or the plows or anything like that, but the more, you know, passenger-type vehicles, the cars and so forth? How many we have, to what departments they're assigned, uh, you know, how much they're used? Who has vehicles assigned to them personally? And I'd just like to get a handle on those costs and see if there's any trimming that can be done there. And also, I'm back to trying to raise revenues rather than cut. Uh, I had an interesting phone conversation this morning with a fellow who's a contractor, and he said, you know, there are all kinds of residential buildings in this city where somebody's, uh, you know, turned their basement into an apartment and they're renting it out, or you've got a, you know, a legal, or you, you know, you've got a duplex that's been turned into a triplex, or something like that, like all these, uh, units that we don't know about. They're assessed by MPAC at a, you know, if, if, in a case where somebody's created, carved an apartment out of part of their house, they're assessed as a single-family residential, and it's actually two-family, and they've got an income from it. Or if they've, uh, taken something that was a duplex, turned it into a triplex, they've got some extra income coming in there, and they're probably not assessed at the proper rate, so, you know, he said there's a lot of lost revenues that the city could be, could be gaining here. Um, and he, he suggested beginning with, uh, um, Niagara Peninsula Energy. If they get a request to put a new meter in a place that already has one, are they notifying us? I mean, that's a surefire signal right there. Somebody says, I need another meter, you know, like, we should be looking at it. Because we're probably losing out on a lot of assessment dollars from this sort of thing, and I know it's a very big ball of wax, and I'm not quite sure where we could start with it, but I think we seriously have to look at that. You know, it, if somebody's gaining, you know, if they're pulling in six fifty a month from a basement apartment, then they probably should be paying more in taxes, and the rest of us are paying more because they're not paying what they should. So I'll just throw that out there. I think that was a very worthy suggestion, and I think it came at a very timely moment as well.
Councillor, I just wanted to address that. I spoke to the same gentleman, but I did explain there are a number of counterchecks to that. If, uh, MPAC is appraising a building or assessing a value of a building and it's worth two hundred thousand dollars, the incremental value that you get from doing a basement apartment would be nominal when you look at the income approach to that property. Likewise, when the property is sold, there's a verification request made to legal that it's in compliance with the bylaw. If you're selling a triplex and it's only, a duplex is allowed, you're only going to get, get away with selling that. Also, CMHC, if they're financing that property, would only finance what it's zoned for, and there's been many cases in the past where CMHC does an inspection, and, uh, they're requesting a, uh, removal of a, of a kitchen, let's say, for example, on the second floor, because it's only a single-family house. So the actual, uh, increase in value would be minimal if there's anything, if you look at the income approach. at the income approach. There's a number of counterchecks or checks along the way as well. So I did explain that to the gentleman. I think he has a good point he wanted to make, but we act on a complaint basis here, and checking on a second meter, in many cases, those people don't even get a second meter, maybe would be, just be disregarded. But MPAC has to deal with those figures, and obviously, you get caught at the time of a sale, or, or whenever there's an issue that may arise from neighbors complaining about parking, if, if you exceeded the amount of parking that was allowed on the property as we have in the past. So I appreciate it's good intention, but I don't know whether staff would address that in the same way, but I don't know if there's anything else we can do. We, we do act on a complaint basis when there's a zoning issue, and I'm not sure if our-
Actually, I can respond to that. I had an illegal triplex operating next door to me for a number of years, and it was a real problem because of the type of people living in it. I noticed that we have it on our city records as only being a duplex. So I talked to somebody in our finance department and said, hey, this thing is actually operating as a triplex. Why don't you let MPAC know? And nothing ever happened. And of course, I ended up buying the property myself, simply to clean up the problem with it, but, you know, building department tells a man, find, operate it as a triplex. That's the found situation. You know, I'm sorry, this complaint basis doesn't work, because been there, seen it, done that, got nowhere. You know, the, the property was not reassessed on the basis of the information that it was pulling in a lot more income than it was actually put down is pulling in. And when I found out the value that it's assessed at, I was absolutely shocked at how low it is. So that check and balance system is broken.
But I know we're working on, on another issue right now, but we do have, I wanted to just clarify, Counselor Carrio was beginning, he made a motion with regard to staff looking at capital. I didn't get a second for that motion, so maybe we have a second, or Counselor Fisher, and let's deal with that motion. So can we hear the motion again, please, Mr. Clerk?
Staff, bring back a report on the capital budget projects that affect the two thousand and nine operating budget.
Okay. So any question, further comments to that? Having seen none, is there?
Yeah, just clarifying that they're going to be highlighting which ones are new infrastructure as opposed to maintaining existing infrastructure, because I really want to focus on what are the new projects that we will in turn have to maintain while we've got all this other stuff.
The document we're relying will be the two thousand and eight capital program that talked about what we were going to do in two thousand and nine, and, and you'll, you'll see the list of proposed projects on that. I mean, we already have a, from our January twenty-sixth, two thousand and nine, a list of new sidewalks that we talked about. We did that report last month. I have that right in front of me here, just what they are. But we can look at where, what the other money is being spent for, but, you know, the bulk of it is being, you know, spent on maintaining what we have. That, that's where the money's going. Storm sewers, that, that's to help out with storm sewer separation projects. So in effect, that's new infrastructure, but it's to help with augment our sewer separation program. But, but a lot of it, the bulk, our budget is, is about maintaining what we have. That's what it's there for.
Okay, so we, we're dealing with Counselor Carrio's motion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried now. Thank you very much. Now, do we want to qualify again for the benefit of the council? And Mr. Burton, have you been keeping tally here? What's the balance at this point without the sidewalks? Do you know roughly? Probably one.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be difficult for, I, I know the numbers a little bit better. I mean, it'll be difficult to say it's nine seventy less a number. I mean, that's where we're at, really. And we'll have to look up what those, those trail numbers are and, and report back, so.
So we look at-
I mean, it's at least the nine seventy less, at least two hundred thousand dollars.
So are we looking at one point six roughly in percent increase at this point? We're down to that point, maybe? Approximately? Okay, just, just approximately, members of council? Okay? So we'll have, we'll have the staff report back at the next meeting? Okay? And at this point then, we should move on to the next, the next report with regard to item number three on fees. Report two thousand and nine oh four user fees regarding sports playing fields?
I would move all three.
Uh, I'm sorry, three which?
I would leave, I would put them at three, four, zero four, zero two, zero three. All right.
Okay. So we have a motion by Counselor Iainoni to move all three? Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Carrio? Okay, any discussion to the motion? Counselor Thompson?
I don't like the fees on playing fields. We're talking about a lot of out-of-town people here, and adults who are coming into the minor sports people in the future, and that's almost had precedent. Fire prevention, one, you know, it's why people pay tax to try to get the out-of-town people again, but this is also, through using the chief, will affect people with fires on their, with their cars on city property, is that accurate? Local residents?
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, this was designed to basically charge a fee to people who don't pay taxes, so that if they were from out of town, they had a fire, they used the services, then they would be required to pay the fee. We wouldn't be hitting our taxpayers with the fee.
And it would affect nine or ten vehicles a year on the highway, their boats, is that correct? Or anybody, I guess, anywhere in the city, is that fair to say?
For the non-resident, it was, it's five percent of about two hundred calls, so-
About ten vehicles?
About ten.
And most of the time, I'm advised that the insurance companies are paying those costs, is that correct? When they're assessed-
Many cases, they get reimbursed from, from their insurance companies.
Their non-residents? Okay? That answered the question. So we do have a motion on the floor, members of council. I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Any, motion's carried.
Just opposed to the first one.
Okay. Counselor Thompson's opposed to the first one, being the user fees.
The user fees for sports playing fields.
Already, is there any new business for the corporate services committee this evening?
Deal with new business, bylaws.
No, corporate services.
Only you, corporate services now in the council, so we're under the bylaws and deal with new businesses.
Okay. Okay. Move on to bylaws at this point, members of council, so I can have a motion to introduce the bylaws. Bylaws are given a first reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all of them in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws two thousand and nine dash twenty-six to two thousand and nine dash thirty-six, we're at a first time.
We have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. And once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all of them in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws, bylaws two thousand and nine dash twenty-six to two thousand and nine dash thirty-six, we're at a second and third time.
Thank you. I'll call for any new business at this time. Counselor Iainoni, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity to have a, sit with a meeting with a, a group of prospective businessmen last week, and it was in regards to a proposal that they had brought to our CIO. I'm sorry, I'm reading by BlackBerry because I didn't print out the, the information I needed, that we would, they had a meeting with our CIO last year in regards to a different technology for our PeopleMover system. My understanding was that the, the system is called Ultra, and it's the Ultra, Ultra Personal Rapid Transit. It's a revolution in sustainable public transport providing on-demand driverless travel. And it's very much like the, the monorail system that Counselor Thompson brought to us when he was the mayor almost a decade ago. In hearing from them, my understanding is last February, they came down with the Heathrow Terminal General Manager from England to Niagara Falls, because this system is going into Heathrow Airport successfully, coming to speak to John McDonald in regards to perhaps us looking at this type of technology. At the time, they were told that because we were dealing with our RFPs and the three proponents, that after the meeting, that he shouldn't have listened to them, or, or they weren't allowed to, to come before council and give us this alternative system. My understanding is they've been to Niagara Falls Tourism, all the major stakeholders, the Parks Commission, the whole gamut, to show this proposal. And I guess my question is, what's, why, where are we sitting in regards to dealing with proponents, and do we have an out? Because the sis, the rubber tire system we're looking at was not what we initially put out for the RFP. But what caught my mind on this proposal, as I sat for the hour with these gentlemen, is that they're looking at bringing the manufacturing of this, of these pods to Niagara Falls. I mean, we're losing manufacturing, and here we have a group who's, who is looking to us to perhaps bring a manufacturing opportunity, and an opportunity for infrastructure jobs to create the infrastructure for this pod system. So I, I guess my first question would be is why even in camera didn't we hear about something like this? Because to me, this is substantial. And where do we sit in regards to no, go or no-go with the proponents, not just the federal money? Because it's really morphed into something that we didn't pass it. And if we have an opportunity to go back to the stakeholders with a version of the original idea, why aren't we doing that? And maybe, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, giving Counselor, uh, tag teaming, allowing me to tag team this with Counselor Thompson, because I know he's been taking them to proponent after proponent, after stakeholder after stakeholder after stakeholder for this. And as I sat through the meeting with them, they explained to me that Counselor Thompson's really been trying to move this along, so I don't want to steal his thunder. I just don't understand why we didn't get a, a perspective that was this big. Even if we were to turn it down, or it wasn't in camera and we couldn't look at it, manufacturing jobs and infrastructure jobs, and a possibility of having our first vision realized would be something I think this council should hear.
Appreciate your question. I'm going to ask the Director of Business Development just to qualify your, your questions and your answers. Mr. Pelasetti, could you address that? I know that we have the three proponents, and we did not, we did not involve ourselves with technology, because we left that up to them. Is that correct? Me, me, what's the-
That's correct, through the mayor, yes. In terms of the RFP, the RFP was a design, maintain, operate, and build, and the technology was wide open. It was going to be determined later, at a later stage, and that was what, as I understand, was provided to those proponents, that they were given the contacts of those three bidders. They were encouraged to, to meet with them and at least provide that information. So through the RFP process, those three bidders would be aware of their technology.
Okay, Mr. Pelasetti, do we have a, to answer the second question, Counselor Iainoni, do we have an opinion that with regard to the, the shortlisted proponents, in regard to our obligations from the legal-
Yes, we've asked for an opinion from Weir Folds, our legal team, on our project management consultant team, and we haven't received that yet. We're hoping to get that in a couple of weeks. As, as council was aware through the, from the final report from the PeopleMover, there was a meeting with the stakeholders, and they were brought up to speed and where the process was heading, and that was that because of various certain conditions, we were looking at a phased-in approach due to the, some issues with the casino and some other considerations with the park, Parks Commission. And so they were advised that, we also had a letter from the federal government that gave us a deadline of June the thirtieth of this year. And it was brought to their attention that, are they still interested in, in the PeopleMover system? They were also told that we still had these three bidders who were still expressing interest in the process, and, and that at that point in time, yes, they did look at a rubber tire system, a rubber tire alignment. But that's when we went back to our legal folks to say, okay, yes, the project's changed. What's, what's our status with these three bidders? And so that's what we're waiting for, but at this point in time, we still have those three bidders at the table until we get this legal interpretation.
Counselor Iainoni and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm sorry, I think after a decade, at this point, we need a fresh start. We need a fresh idea. I, I, if you're going to the stakeholders now and saying to them, well, this is morphed from this into a rubber tire system, and they, they've heard the proposal for this, this rapid transit, and it hasn't, they've heard it, but we haven't heard it till the proponents are contacting us personally. I, I really think that was a disservice to this council. And I guess I'd like to make a motion, I, actually, I'll let Counselor Thompson speak first, because he's been on this for ten months. And then I'd like to make a motion in, in regard to the reporting of the, the PeopleMover movement as we have to date, and I'd like to talk about the reporting process of the contracted employee to staff.
Okay, Counselor Thompson.
Yes, thank you. Well, I was approached about this probably a year ago, and I've been to every agency from the Parks Commission to the casino, to the, all the major players, the VIA's, Niagara Falls Tourism, with the technology that I thought was pretty phenomenal and inexpensive, and certainly, in my opinion, far superior. In fact, this is a rubber tire on a guided rail system, but it is rubber tire. But I've been totally frustrated by the fact that we have these three bidders. But what is even more frustrating is the fact that the council is never updated. The committee, I think the last meeting we had was probably two to three months ago, maybe longer. I know that the private sector is, is interested in trying to get buses out of, probably out of frustration, to get this thing moving along. We're moving towards the deadline of, of June of this year, with the twenty-five million at the federal level, and we have Mr. McDonald working on this, and in isolation, nobody knows what's going on. The committee should be updated regularly, the council should know what's going on, what's the status of the whole situation, and particularly this legal opinion, that should be expedited as quickly as possible, just to see if we have any options. If we have no options, then there's not much sense of, of worrying about any other technology. In my opinion, the technology that Counselor Iainoni saw in the last week is superb for what we were looking at. That doesn't mean it's going to float with the, the private sector, but I think we have to have some updates. We're, we're all in the dark here. We don't know what's going on. I'd like to see something brought in, and I, I don't think it has to be in a committee meeting. It can be brought to council and completely brought up to date on where we stand with respect to this whole matter. Is that, is that an unreasonable situation to you to-
Counselor, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, we did, this council did direct Mr. McDonald to respond to Serge Pelasetti from our business development, obviously even working closely with him. I know there's a number of challenges, and Mr. Pelasetti will certainly address them. We do have two other partners as well, so, Mr. Pelasetti, would you just address the issue?
Through you, worship, yes. That's what's in, in, it's planned, is we are looking to come back to council and the stakeholder group within three to four weeks, because when we left that stakeholder session, we were going to go ahead and look at the final alignment. There was also some technical issues that we had to deal with, this legal issue as well. So we anticipate that we should have those answers in two to, say, four weeks, and we'll be back to both parties with an update.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Iainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had a conver, I've had, I've actually talked to both our acting CAOs in regards to this. There's a PeopleMover file. There's a, there's a whole process that has taken place. I've asked both of them, have you had an opportunity to read the file? They're our acting CAOs. My, I, I understand today that Mr. McDonald answers to Serge Pelasetti. To, I'm, I'm sorry, but I find that reporting process, no disrespect to Serge, but he should be answering to our two acting CAOs, who should have had an opportunity to read the file and, and get themselves up to date. I think this whole consultant, working by yourself at home for six hundred bucks a day, one day a week, in a time where we should be cost-cutting, when we have two acting CAOs who could really take over this process and keep us informed internally, is something we need to take a look at. And/or the reporting process. internally, is something we need to take a look at. And/or the reporting process. He shouldn't be answering to Serge. He should be answering to our CAOs. Our CAOs can then bring to us the information. But this whole thing is done in an isolation bubble that the rest of this council is not involved in, and I'd like to see that improved.
Well, let's see if we can answer your question. Counselor Carrio, do you want to make a comment?
Just that I think we probably could drag this out for a minute if you like, but just by asking for Mr. McDonald to come and give this report, probably we'd get this done.
And, you know, we've tasked Mr. McDonald with that job. These two acting CAOs weren't tasked with that job. We have a former CAO who's tasked with doing the job. He doesn't operate necessarily out of his house. He is having, conducting meetings here on a regular basis. I know that Mr. Fellasetti will address that, and he's here, and he's visiting with stakeholders and different things, and so, he's just not, again, operating out of his house. But he was tasked by this council to respond to Mr. Fellasetti, and nor were the acting CAOs challenged with that. There is a file, it's very complete, and there's reference there that can be made in the CAO's office. So, Mr. Fellasetti, do you want to just qualify any of that further?
Well, I think you said it perfectly, through you, Mayor.
So, this council has given the direction to the process. We're just waiting on a number of issues between legal opinions. In fact, we have to hear from the OG, the FMC. There's a number of partners that we're dealing with as well. And so, I know that people are weary. I certainly will appreciate that. This has been a very long, involved process, and it's got, it's gotten, and it's evolved. And certainly, the idea that Counselor Thompson and you present with regard to technology is something that I hope, certainly, that the proponents will, will certainly be aware of. That's their business. And of course, I think we've directed those people to each of the three proponents. The proponents are waiting for comments from us back at this point, and once we get opinions, once we get a direction. We're dealing with the stakeholders. Numerous meetings have been held over the last couple of years with the stakeholders, and we're waiting on the response. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, my point is, one man was responsible for allowing or not allowing the information to come to council in regards to these proponents and their ideas. That one person decided that the nine of us, or I don't know whether you heard it, whether the eight of us would find out that information. I have a problem with that.
Well, you have to understand that we didn't select technology, and he directed those people to go to the proponents and said the same thing that we're hearing tonight.
Has some state of the point.
So, well, I don't know, well, the proponents have the right. They're the ones that are going to come for a design-build. Counselor, if you listen to what I'm saying, they're the ones that were given the opportunity to do a design, build, and operate, and the technology was not defined. That's, you're talking about one specific issue in technology. They're the ones that'll come back to us once they get the okay as to what technology they want to incorporate on a design-build-operate. That's what Mr. Fellasetti was saying tonight. You're talking about one small component of a very large project.
That has taken us a decade.
There's been many issues. We have ridership, but there's been many issues, longer than a decade. Counselor Thompson?
Two decades, yeah. Anyway, on to something else. As I was with the snow melting and driving along the roadways, it was nice to see how successful we were with our leaf pickup. A lot of leaves on the boulevards, and really shows that we did, made the right decision in canceling that. I'd like to have a report back saying, what are we going to do in the spring with the pickup of all of these leaves? There's a huge, the end of Dorchester Road is really something to see. And all of the people have it all lined up nicely on the boulevard, and it's been sitting there all winter long, and that's just one area, Rolle Woods and some of the other ones, and Chippewa. So, we have a real challenge with our, with our no-budget available to do all of these things. I understand that. But with that, we have another problem, which is, what are we going to do? Because the leaves are going to come out again in the, in the spring, and we're going to have them piling up in the fall. I'd like to have a report giving us a complete outline of what we're going to do with the leaves, certainly the new bags that have to be utilized, what the public is going to have to do. I think we have to have a public education with respect to what we expect them to do with respect to the leaf collection this year. And I think there's an opportunity to coordinate the volunteers and schoolchildren for some of the seniors who may have. To offset the problem with that, and also even get in through some of the environmental aspects of it, where, you know, cutting out the leaves with the lawnmower is also a good fertilizer and a real education package with respect to that. So, they're not going to go away, and I think we have to plan for that. So, I'll make a motion. We have a report back with the whole gamut of leaf collection, because the public are going to want it all, and we should be prepared for that.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Sorry, Counselor Maves?
I just wanted to say that some of the leaves at the Dorchester North have been picked up, so there has been a crew out there, so that is being-
We have had crews out during the break in the weather. I think Mr. Holman will confirm that. Do you want to just confirm that, please? Whenever possible, is that, we're still doing it? Is that correct? Do we still continue it? Okay, so, we're using our staff when weather breaks and allows to have a chance to pick up. And also, I understand that if these leaves are put into paper bags, the region will pick them up. Is that correct? So, anytime?
Anytime.
So, that's, that's something the public should be aware of, but we'll continue with our motion. So, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Motion adjourned by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Diadadi. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, members of council.